Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. For the record, I will announce that this is our July 15, 2025, 7:00 PM, regular meeting. Please be advised, for anyone who needs them, that there are assisted listening devices. They're on the table in the back of the room. And now I will ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Marconi.
Here.
Thank you.
Everyone, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to Item C, which is our adoption of agenda. Do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, we do not have any proposed changes from staff.
Okay, and what about from councilmembers? Then, seeing none.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we want to pull something from the consent calendar, do we do that now or when we get to the consent calendar?
When we get to the consent calendar, is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That brings us to items for the good of the city. And we have today, one item, Item D1, which is a proclamation designating July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Arinda. And I will ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Todd Trimble, to please come to the podium. And Director Trimble, I want to read a little bit from the proclamation. We have a very long agenda tonight, so I'm not going to read the full thing. But before doing so, I think I speak for the full council in just expressing endless gratitude to the entire Parks and Recreation Department for everything you do all year long, you know, including really assisting with pivotal community events in Arinda, such as the Fourth of July and our Winter Fest. And the summertime is sort of, you know, ground zero for Parks and Rec with all the different classes. And so let me just read a little bit from the proclamation. I'll give you a chance to say a few words, Director Trimble. Whereas Parks and Rec is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Arinda, and Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas in Arinda ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Arinda, California recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Arinda that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Arinda, California. And I will present this to you, and then I wanted to, or before I do so, I want to give you a chance to say a few words.
No, I, Council and Mayor, I appreciate it. I didn't have anything prepared. You know, we are certainly proud of, you know, in a small agency, in a relatively small department, of what we're able to do and accomplish and provide. And of course, we couldn't do any of that without the support of our commission and you all there. So we thank you very much.
And thank you to all the members of the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you for reminding me of that. And for those of you who are here, we have quite a few programs this summer still in progress. We have, and our Parks and Rec Department coordinates all of this. We have Thursday Night Food Trucks. We have summer movies in the park, and we have concerts in the park. Am I correct, Director Trimble?
That's a partial list, yeah.
And where can folks go if they want to learn more?
Yeah, anybody can certainly come to the community center, but the best place to look is arindaparksandrec@cityofarinda.org. We're through, we're just starting Week Seven of 10 Weeks of Camp, so that's keeping most of us pretty busy, but thank you again.
Thank you for that. It raises a lot of funds for our city as well. No, we'll just move this one along. No offense, just the mayor. We're good. Okay, that concludes Item D and takes us to Item E, which is our public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. In addition, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council as part of public forum? Seeing none, I will simply note for the record that we did get one public forum comment from Nick Warrenoff, and that is included in the communications received from the public packet and was received by the council. And then I will close public forum, and that takes us to our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And I know that we have a lot of public, or at least some public comment already for Item F9, so I was going to request that that be moved from our consent calendar. Aside from F9, is there any other item that anyone wants to remove from the consent calendar? Councilmember G.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull Item F3, the Regional Advocacy Agreement.
Okay. Any other items? Okay. Then, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as amended, which includes F1, F2, F4 through F8?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, and that takes us to Item F3. And Councilmember G, since, would you like to begin?
Yes, I only wanted to pull this item, Madam Mayor, because I really wanted to thank our city manager. I wanted to thank all of the people sitting on the dais up here tonight. I think this is an incredible move forward for our community, for working together with Lafayette and Maraga. Many of you know that for the last several years, I've been very focused on wanting Arinda to have more political advocacy support, and I'm so pleased that we've been able to do that. I think that is helping us a lot, helping our staff and helping our community. And I certainly hope everyone is, you know, taking note of that. But I think moving even further forward with some of our strategic objectives and working ever closer with our very, very, very close sister cities of Lafayette and Maraga on issues that are affecting all of us, I just wanted to thank you, and I wanted to highlight it that I think it is an incredibly important step forward for us.
Thank you. I could not agree more, and that was very well said. Anyone else want to comment on Item F3? With that, do we have a, I'm trying to remember, yes, there is an authorization. So do we have a motion to approve Item F3?
Yes, I'd be happy to move to approve Item F3.
Which is authorizing the city manager to enter into a regional advocacy agreement with the city of Lafayette, the town of Maraga, and Townsend Public Affairs.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, wait, I did not call public comment on it. Excuse me. So before we have a motion, is there any public comment on Item F3? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment. Now, I'm going to go back and ask for a motion on Item F3.
I'm happy to move that we approve Item F3, our Regional Advocacy Agreement.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Item F3 passes unanimously, and that takes us to Item F9. And I think we probably, Madam City Manager.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Scott Christie, our Public Works Director, will be making a short presentation and/or answering questions that you may have.
Thank you. Director Christie.
Good evening, City Council. I do have a little presentation that we can bring up to cover some of the main points of this item, which is somewhat of a complex matter that involves some signage that's been in place to prevent traffic from turning at certain times and using Ivy Drive as a bypass from Maraga Way during rush hour. Okay, so the resolution and traffic order that is proposed in this item essentially removes one of the no left turn signs and then modifies the other ones on Maraga Way that prevent left and U-turns. And then it adds a new sign on Artis Drive to prevent right turns going southbound. So here we have it. The background, back in 1999, this matter first came up, and it was brought up because of speeding conflicts with Arinda Intermediate School, and then people basically using Ivy Drive, as I was mentioning, to bypass congestion, and then that creates its own conflicts, of course. Here's a view of the map, and Arinda Intermediate School is shown there off of Ivy Drive, and then this is from the north part, the north intersection of Ivy Drive and Maraga. And then you can go all the way down Ivy Drive to where it outlets at the south side, which is at the city limits, right at Miramonde High School. Also included in the map is Delray Elementary, because those students and teachers use Maraga Way also. So in 1999, then, because of the requests and so forth, studies were done and included stop signs, as shown. However, the study did not recommend any other sorts of traffic control devices like no left turn signs, because they thought it would impact other streets in a negative way. Then in 2000 to 2002 timeframe, the matter was brought up again as a traffic calming matter by mostly the Ivy Drive neighborhood. As a result, it was recommended, and then city council decided to install the no left turn sign at that northern intersection of Ivy Drive and Maraga Way. To limit it just during the school year, that enforcement, I shouldn't say enforcement, but that restriction then was just for that 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM timeframe only. And it was to be done for a trial period. So subsequently, then, staff evaluated the traffic patterns and found that it basically was a positive restriction, so to speak. So then in 2002, it was kept as a permanent installation then with that restriction. Again, school days, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and then in the non-school time, our crews removed that sign. Further restrictions then in 2012, and this would be for Maraga Way in between those two points of Ivy Drive at Southway Court and Whitehall Drive. Similar restrictions then, 7:00 to 8:00, school year only, Monday through Friday, because of issues with people. In one case, at Whitehall, using that as a bypass, and with Southway, I believe, it would be just to do a U-turn to not have to be restricted by the one at Ivy Drive and then going back up to Ivy. So here again, there's the locations. Two was the Southway Court, and then Whitehall is the, you noted, number one on that map. Then more recently, then in 2017, it was brought up at the TSAC Committee to consider adjusting the time and doing some other things. So that was discussed, but then no action was really taken because of the variation in start times and furthermore. Now, more recently, even in 2019 timeframe, the state bill, the state law changed so that high schools had to start no earlier than 8:30. Miramonde actually had started at 8:00, so they adjusted their time then and changed it. Delray had always, I shouldn't say always, but in recent history has been from 8:00, OIS at 8:45. So the change then, I think I covered that in the next slide, was that Miramonde changed their signs to comply, changed their start time to comply with the state law. So TSAC was then requested by OIS to evaluate that because they felt that the 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM was kind of working against its initial purpose. Miramonde, as I noted, had changed their start time so that, again, there were conflicts found. And a meeting was held by our staff, a Zoom meeting, and they did a lot of outreach, got a lot of participation from people, and we collected that, those responses. Then proposed to the TSAC, based on those findings, that a traffic study should be done. The city engaged one of our traffic engineering consultants that's on our on-call list to do that study, and that was concluded in 2024, in December 2024. Again, it looked at all those different sign locations, traffic patterns, possible impacts, possible solutions and changes. The study recommends that that no left turn sign at the north end be removed, and changing those intermediate signs from 7:00 to 8:00 AM to 7:30 to 8:30 AM, and then to modify our traffic signal timing controls to improve circulation. So here again, there's a map, kind of a repeat of the earlier one, showing those different locations. The signal timing there shown at the Miramonde South Side, Ivy Drive and Maraga Way. Finally, then, in February of 2025, we had a meeting with TSAC to go through these findings. TSAC meeting itself was attended by quite a few members of the public and interested parties. And TSAC, based on the feedback they got, asked for a second public meeting. So that was then held April 16. We did quite a bit of outreach for that. It was Zoom-based, so we got quite a few attendees, 41 people. And then survey questions were posed during the meeting, acting like polls, to basically get feedback on support or not support for the traffic study recommendations. The responses were, again, distributed. We realized that not everybody's going to come out to their preferences. However, we felt that the support was in favor of the recommendations. So we then went forward to TSAC on May 19, who concurred with the recommendation to seek city council approval tonight. And then this is the detail of the traffic order that's proposed, remove the no left turn sign, change the signs, the sign times on those intermediate signs, and then also, and I probably didn't cover this adequately, also install the no right turn sign. Let me back up on that one to show you that location. Again, this is up here on the upper right, the proposed no right turn sign then. That would restrict right turns then, so people couldn't bypass the intent of not using Ivy Drive by going down Artis and then cutting over to Ivy Drive. So that was the intent of that. I should point out that this, per the traffic study, is intended as a trial, so that we will evaluate it if there appears to be reasons to change it or tweak it in a different manner. That's, of course, always an option. If it turns out to be a positive move, which we believe and the traffic consultant believes, then we would keep the signage in place and the changes would become permanent, so to speak. There is the cost, of course, which I would say is not extreme, to change the signs out in terms of the wording of the signs and then remove the one side and add a new sign, but I wouldn't call it an excessive amount. There's an ongoing expense, of course, just with the management of the signs for the school year. We do have funding through gas tax, tax for this purpose. And that concludes what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. I'm sure there are some questions. I have a few. Who wants to start? Okay, Vice Mayor.
I had just one. The right turn on Artis recommendation, did you hear anything from the
The right turn on Artith recommendation, did you hear anything from the people who live on Artith that that was going to be a problem for them or do they generally support?
I don't unfortunately have that detail. We can check. I, I don't believe it was excessive and that we, we didn't really point that out as an issue.
Okay. Other questions? Go ahead, draw a line. Councilmember Hoxie.
Okay. My concerns are with the traffic study. First of all, the traffic study says it was conducted on Thursday, May 24th, but I believe that was actually a Friday. It was also during finals week at Miramonte, which would greatly reduce the traffic pattern because during finals, students come if they have that class for a final and if they don't, then they're not driving to school on that day. So that would have a large impact on the validity, in my opinion, of the study because if it's a different number of students, it's also very close to the end of the year. It could have even been graduation day. I don't remember in 2024 what graduation day was, but my concern is that that wasn't an appropriate day to do or week to do a traffic study, given that it was finals week. Was that taken into account when the study was conducted?
Well, I know we wanted to do it during the school year. I wasn't personally involved in working with the consultant on that, so I'd, I'd have to check with our people that were involved.
Seems to me that the timing would be better in the fall when, you know, it would be a more robust and you want to make sure not to be, if nothing else, it was the Friday before a holiday weekend, but I happen to know that was finals week.
Right. We, we realize there's variation in the school schedule. I mean, the consultants did a lot of work in the city, was aware of the school schedules, but maybe not on the details as far as what type of activities were occurring at Miramonte.
One other concern is it talks about the relatively few numbers of, of left turns from 7:00 to 8:00 AM, but that was because there was a posted no left turn sign. I mean, it does, the traffic study does seem to indicate that there were some left turns contrary to the sign, but
Sure.
Obviously, you don't know how many left turns there might have been had there not been a sign.
Correct.
Other questions? I'm, I'm looking through the study because I thought it said it was done on two days, but maybe I misunderstood.
It said that the study was conducted on Thursday, May 24th, which was a Friday. And it said then that there were observations on two days, the 20, the Tuesday and the Thursday.
Thank you.
All of which was during finals week.
Other questions? Councilmember G.
Director Christie, I, I have spent quite a bit of time looking at this and as we all know, this is one of those problems where you push it here and it just pops out here, right? I mean, there is no real solution to the traffic situation in, in terms of, you know, really getting it completely eliminated through the neighborhood at the peak times. But, but I, but the part I'm a little struggling with is I'm trying to understand what the problem that everybody is trying to solve. I know the school times changed. Was it because they can't get to, was it because since Miramonte pushed time out, that left a half hour where you could make that detour around or was it that you couldn't get to OIS? I'm just having a hard time understanding what are we trying to solve?
Well, well, I mean, there's a combination of things in that part of it, I believe, is teachers and students that say want to get to the zero period, which is 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, or, or earlier than the normal start time. With the current no left turn restriction
They have to go down.
They can't, they can't really get there. I, I think it's from 7:30 is when the zero period starts. So they're prevented from getting there with the current signage, whereas if we modify it as proposed, they could legally turn left, so it wouldn't restrict that. I mean, that's one example, probably not the most important thing, but one factor. Sure.
Because I have a Miramonte student and I've been polling some Miramonte students as the meetings went on this year. What they say is that Moraga Way gets so congested that it's faster to go left on Ivy between 8:00 and 8:30 to go around the stoplights that just aren't clearing on Moraga Way. And so both Artith and Ivy are the way to get around Moraga Way stoplight congestion.
But, and I know this was started by an OIS teacher. And the thing is if there isn't that much traffic between 7:00 and 8:00, how much longer do you think it would take to actually go down to Coral and make a left? Then do you have any idea how much longer that would take between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning?
I, I did it all year.
So I just want to, we are going to have time for discussion. I think this is actually very helpful, but if you know the time, otherwise.
I have one, I have one additional question, Scott, and that is I didn't see it in here anyway, anywhere. I went out and, you know, drove the whole neighborhood again and refreshed my memory since my kids aren't driving it anymore. But the, the thing that struck me that has never come up in all of this is there's a stop sign at Artith and Coral, but it's on Art, it stops on Artith, right? We did have one public comment about a four-way stop. Was that ever looked at? The sight distance down Coral is, it, it reminds me of Reem and Zeander. Okay? I'm sure the traffic doesn't justify it, but this, but I'm surprised that the safety doesn't, simply because if you were, if you were on Artith, although I guess if we cut off, if you're not supposed to be on Artith, but still if you are on Artith and Coral and you wanted to make a left turn, you really can't see the traffic coming. It's just, I'm just curious whether you all looked at that.
We did look at it. We consider it separate from this study, so we are planning to engage a traffic consultant to look at that very issue. We, we are aware of that particular, there's been a few actually complaints about that with respect to speeding sight distance is a stop sign warranted or to go from a two or four-way stop. So, so that'll be looked at, but we, we believe that's, you know, primarily a separate matter from the one in question.
Okay, I understand that. Good to hear. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Are you also looking at the sidewalk from down Coral to Moraga Way that needs to be finished there as part of that?
We're looking at it. I mean, realize it's not a funded project at this point, but we will consider that. And that can be proposed as a future CIP project if there's support.
I had, I had another question about the study. There's this whole cut-through analysis that was done, but I was confused about when they say, what does that mean? They explain it, right? What the cut-through analysis was and how they did it. But are they, are they looking at anyone who turned left from Moraga Way onto Ivy and then drove all the way on Ivy down to Miramonte in one time period? And here's my question. Well, I'm trying to figure out from the cut-through analysis whether there was an analysis of how many of those people turning left were going to OIS and stopping at OIS and how many were going all the way to Miramonte? Because I know, also having had three kids through Miramonte, exactly what that traffic is like in the morning. And I know, I've seen the kids that even with the sign there, that, you know, do, do go through, right? So is there any way to differentiate? Because there were these numbers and they're on page, they're packet page 112 of the report where they talk about the percentage of cut-through trips from Monday through Friday in each of the time periods, right? And it's, you know, 8:00 AM to 8:15 is 20% and then it's 8:15, 8:30 is 26%. And they talked about, I just, I couldn't figure out why those people were turning left, right? Were they cutting through to Miramonte or were they going to OIS?
There might be a way to tell. I'd, I'd have to check with a consultant on what data sources they use, but there are some, you know, fairly available programs to do that where using cell phone data and looking at the traffic volumes, they can determine what the most likely destinations were, so.
Right. Because even though there was, at this point in time, there's no left turn, after 8:00 is permitted, right?
Right.
So anybody who's turning left after 8:00 is doing it lawfully. And so I was curious, who are those people? Where are they going?
Right. I can find out.
Okay. And then the other question I had was how are, and I'm sorry, I know this was in the report, but again, not, not a traffic engineer, so just, how were the traffic signals modified to improve the flow? Or what was the recommendation? I didn't quite understand that.
I, I think it has to do with like time limits that can be set on how long it'll be in a certain phase. So that can be increased or decreased.
Because some of the lights take so long. Okay.
Right. You know, depending, I mean, how much do you want your side traffic to queue up versus the through traffic? So, I mean, there's a few different parameters that you can set and then evaluate if it works.
Okay.
So it's, it's a little bit of trial and error with the current signals that we have.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll, we'll then, unless, is there anything else, Director Christie, you wanted to say now? We may have more questions for you when we get to discussion, but.
Again, just that, you know, this has been looked at for several years. Yeah, I think the recommendations are good and it's worth trying. And again, it, it can be changed, you know, the times can be modified. Even the traffic consultant suggested, you know, by changing it 15 minutes if, if one or the other signs was determined not to be a good fix. So, okay, thank you very much.
Did you have enough? Yeah, sorry, Councilmember Riley.
Okay, this whole thing is, question, do you think it was studied? Okay, so we were proposing to eliminate the left turn at the upper or the first Ivy turn. Was it ever looked at to change the hours, leave the no left, but change the hours versus take the whole sign away?
I don't know for sure. I, I would suspect so, but I, I realize that wasn't really shown as an option clearly, but I, again, I'd have to find out what other options were looked at.
Thank you. Thank you. If no other council member questions now, we'll, we'll dive into public comment. I will note for the record that we did get two written comments that are in our packet and some others after. So we did get quite a bit of public comment. And first I have Tim Silviera.
Good evening. I live at 64 Ivy Drive and I was actually with a, one, and there's one more coming, an original part of the studies done in 99 and on that Ivy Drive neighborhood group that got all these changes made to South Arinda for the safety of our neighborhood. So my bottom line is don't take the no left turn sign out. That was originally placed there in lieu of a stop traffic light. And we just didn't have the money to do it at the time because they wanted to spread the money out for, for doing the best good in South Arinda. Now, I've heard Scott had some great graphics up there, kind of took me through memory lane of all that stuff. I worked on the, that committee till 2005 from 1999. And the study that Fear and Peers did is probably the closest to an environmental impact report for South Ivy ever done. The school never did it when they made the Inland Valley School, Arinda Intermediate School. They just shoved everybody in there, didn't think what it would take bringing 65, 70% of all the students to South Arinda. Now, Moraga Way is always crowded. You're never going to solve any problems on Moraga Way. Excuse me. There's nothing that can be done to take that many cars off the road, especially in springtime when all the new drivers get all their new cars and here they go. So it's been like that since 2000. It'll be like that in 2040. It's just the way Arinda is. It's an unfixable problem, Councilwoman, like you were saying. I mean, you just can't do it. My girls went there. I mean, it's like you just shift stuff over. So my question is why they want to take the no left turn sign out at Ivy Drive? Is, is, we're going back to where we started before in 1999, all the cut-through traffic that comes through there, and it was the same argument. You move it here, you move it there. You got people coming from Moraga that want to cut through Ivy Drive. You got, you know, when I, when I'm coming back from Akalani's High School in the morning, I stay off of Moraga Way if I'm coming in after 8:00. If you're on there before 8:00, the bell schedule at OIS doesn't matter. If they want to get there earlier, it takes three and a half, four minutes tops to drive to Coral, make a left turn. I live right at the entrance to OIS, so I kind of know exactly how long it takes to get there. So it can be done. If they got to get there before 8:00, if you're on Moraga Way before 8:00, you can, you can easily get to Coral with minimal obstacles and not have to turn left on Ivy Drive and not get a ticket. So I say there's really no good reason for taking the no left turn sign out. The U-turn signs, 7:30 to 8:30, that's great. If you change the sign on no left turn to make it a different time, then it, then it disadvantages the teachers that get there late at, sorry, I'm out of here, one sec, at, at OIS. So once again, just please don't take that no left turn sign out. Keep our neighborhood safe, keep our elders safe and all our young families safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for public comment, I have Doreen Mar. And, and just as a reminder, the public comment is three minutes. The lights are on to let you know when you're running out of time.
I understand. Thank you. Hi, I'm Doreen Mar. I'm a longtime resident of Arinda, of 45 years on Ivy Drive. So I've seen a lot before incorporation, before, after incorporation. And I'm surprised to find I'm here tonight, 25 years later. So all the slideshows that were just shown right now, all the details, I was in the thick of it, sitting in every meeting for over nine years, started this whole process. So I've seen it. So it's amazing to me to see a traffic engineer historically lay it out, but I was actually in the thick of it. So after, let's see, 45 years ago I was here, then 25 years later, we saw the evolution of changes in the city. Schools changing, the population changing, three schools in South Arinda. And sadly, being a observer of evolving, I was a very big volunteer in all schools for all, for all my kids and went to many city councils for 25 years. And so it's, I'm shocked to be able to, or have to be here tonight to talk about an issue that we talked about 25 years ago. So Fear and Peers did a lot of studies with a lot of stakeholders involved in the process for four years. We got the city, the city, the Akalani's, OUSD, Concha Costa Bus. We got all the city staff. I worked the city staff here in Arinda for all those years and many city council members. So it was a long study that took two and a half years to do. And that was when Safe Routes to School was involved too. So that was another, another study that was integrated in the whole process. So four years later, we had a whole list of things that we can do. And the question is, we can't. We have no funding. And the district said they had no money, the city had no money, but we felt so heartfelt about that because I saw day in and out, dangerous events going on. Ivy Drive people, there's over 600 plus homes of residents trying to get out of their driveway, get rear-ended, and it doesn't get recorded, but it's, it was happening. Kids were being hit to the ground. We saw that happening. We brought it to the attention of our leaders. It was like, not my problem, not my problem. So we searched around and as Tim mentioned, we were surprised. We just started, okay, how can we bring funds into the city? So we started calling legislators. Anyway, loan behold, we were able to help facilitate funds coming to the city. So we're talking about this no left turn on Ivy Drive. In the long studies that were done, one of the key, I'm sorry, I'm going over three minutes, but one of the key
Are we?
Mitigation measures right there was a traffic signal. The city council, Fear and Peers, everybody.
I do need, sorry, I do need you to sum up. We just have to be fair to everybody, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I didn't expect.
I, I, wait, I need to ask you to.
Okay, I'm going to end it. So instead of a traffic signal, at a time that costs $150,000, that the funds were not, we wanted to spread it wider for the community. We worked for the entire committee. We got the no left turn.
Thank you.
And it's proven effective, so don't remove it.
Next I have Emily Wet-Polkari. Next, I have Emily Wet-Polkari.
Hi. Emily Wet-Polkari, I live at 182 Artith Court. And thank you for reading the comment that I submitted. And I can tell you all know the area well, which is great. My first question is, why is the city not working with OIS in Miramani to spread the start times out so that we could have an effective no left turn sign? Right? The problem is that OIS and Miramani now start too close together to prevent people from turning left because you'd stop the OIS parents. But if they started half an hour apart again, we could change the times on the signs and it would be no problem. I walk on Artith and Coral every morning. My kids walk, last year they walked to Delray and OIS. Next year they'll walk to OIS in Miramani. I do not understand why safety on the surrounding streets, especially for child pedestrians, would be considered a separate issue. If you're going to open up Ivy Drive to Miramani traffic, especially traffic that you know is speeding through the neighborhood, I see these kids every morning. These are the kids who are late for high school and that is why they're cutting through the neighborhood. They're not driving safely, they're teenagers. It, you know, that's going to happen. But to open up Coral, which is, so now Coral will be the only street for these drivers to cut through. They either will have to take Ivy all the way down to Miramani or they're going to come through Ivy, turn right on Coral, come over the Coral Hill, which has a blind intersection at the top where my kids cross the street every day when they walk to school. And so to put these speeding high school drivers onto Coral is really, really dangerous and should not be done without safety precautions for those children who are crossing at Coral. You also have from Artith down to Maraga Way, no sidewalk for the kids who have to walk with traffic to get to the crosswalk across Maraga Way to get to Delray and Miramani. So I don't think that those of us who want pedestrian safety in the neighborhood should have to wait for years of studies and public comments and TSAC meetings to get that if you're going to change the traffic patterns in the neighborhood. I do appreciate the city agreeing to study those issues. I don't understand why it wasn't included originally in changing the traffic patterns. I think it should have been. But I, I really think that if you implement this study or if you implement this pilot program, you really, really quickly need to implement pedestrian safety measures for the kids on Coral. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Rudolph.
Hello, I'm Lisa Rudolph. I'm a teacher at OIS and an Arinda resident. And I had two sons who went through OIS, played jazz band there, had to be there at 7:45. And both of them are out of Miramanti now. I am the one that started this process because I agree with everything that has been said here. It is a problem Miramanti students cutting through. But the fact that Miramanti starts at 8:30 now means that between seven and eight, there really aren't that many Miramanti students. There may be some still, but the vast majority of Miramanti students are, are turning between eight and 8:30. And yes, they are running late often. And it was looked at to possibly change the time. I've gone to every TSAC meeting for the last two years. I've missed, I think, three. In the last two years, I've gone to a meeting every, every month. And it has been discussed multiple times, could we, could we just change the time? And if you change the time, you're now affecting all of the OIS drop off because all teachers have to be at OIS at 8:15 and all students have to be there by 8:40. That's when our first bell rings. So although it would be good to be able to change it, 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 it really would impact everyone going to OIS if it were to change. I'd also like to address something that Councilmember Hoxey talked about, and I'm glad you're looking at the validity as a math teacher, the validity of a study is important. There's only one day out of the days of finals where not every student needs to be there at that time because it's either period seven or period one, and they only make one of those in the morning every final. So it could, it could have been, I don't remember what day it was, but all the other days, every student, and actually the traffic is worse in finals week because of that, because every other day there's someone that goes late. I'd like to talk about Coral for a second because I have gone down to Coral and turned left many, 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 many times. And that worries me actually because it does take longer. I've, I've measured it, anywhere from three to 10 minutes. And then one day it even took longer because I don't know what happened. It took even longer than that. So it is a significant amount of time that it takes to go down to Coral. But more importantly, it's putting a lot of traffic on Coral, which is a windier road. There's a blind hill going up Coral in that direction. And there are, are people walking to Delray, families, kids by themselves, people walking dogs. Every time I turn there, I see people coming down the hill and it worries me. And it's not just a couple of, of people turning at that time. There are at least four programs that I know of that start before, that start about, say, between 7:30 and 7:45 at OIS. The jazz band starts at that time. We have zero period PE that starts at that time. We have math council starts at that time and we have Mandarin. And there could be more, those are the ones that I know of. So this isn't just a couple of teachers who want to get to school early. That's included in it. It is, it is hundreds of families every week that do make that turn and are going onto Coral now, which again, in my mind, is, is, is dangerous. Thank you for your time. And I hope that there will be a continuing, continued discussion about the safety around our schools because it obviously is an important thing and the traffic on Maraga Way because I hope there, maybe there can be some solutions to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Livin. Am I mispronouncing your name? I'm sorry. How do I pronounce that correctly?
It's Lum Nakley. It's a combo name.
Oh, okay.
Lum hyphen Nakley.
Okay. Sorry, it says something different here.
Yeah. Black Doreen, I have been to council many times and actually once spoke. And then four years later, Greg Wheatland was still mayor. So it's been a long time that we've worked. I live at 93 Coral, right by the OIS walkway. And I've lived there for 30 years. And when I first moved there, it was just appalling how dangerous the car, kids would come flying down the hill. And there was just a general disregard and not much monitoring. And so it took a long time. I was involved four years. These folks were involved twice as long as that. But it, we finally got good mitigation, traffic mitigation. And the priority to me is safety. It's safety around schools. That's what we all owe as the grownups in this community, you as leaders and us. Everybody has to make some compromise to make sure that they're, and I don't want to just make this sound corny, but it is for greater common good, it's safety. I'm a retired pediatrician and I have devoted my life to health and safety of kids. And I feel that it's important to look at that. For those of you who didn't really know how, what the origin was, when Ryan Kane had his Zoom meeting on October, I think it was October 23, 73% of people didn't even know about the no left turn sign. And so I think for me, it's like having vaccines recalled because nobody remembers. And I'm an octogenarian. I remember I've taken care of kids with diphtheria and polio. So it's like nobody was there, right? Nobody lived it. And so it's really hard to find worth in what was decided 25 years ago. So I understand and I, I can see the whole bigger picture. I, but I, I don't want that sign removed. Whatever happens with the time may or may not impact, but there needs to be some more inclusion in, in how you go about doing this. To just vote to say this is out is a mistake. And I, I would, I trust, you know, I trust you guys to do, to hear us, to hear everybody and to weigh with good conscience what is most safe for everyone, our kids. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards. Are there any other members of the public here who would like to speak on item F9? Please. And I'll just ask when you come up to the podium if you could state your name, identify yourself first and then you'll have.
Chris Garoot, 60 Ivy Drive. I sent in a, a note today. I wasn't planning on speaking because I think I pretty much summarized what, what's going on with that. But I did want to give you some numbers. I ran my own survey. I sat out in front of the entrance to the school because I wanted to be able to see who's coming from each direction. And let's see, you want to know the date of that, February 24th. That was, there were 134 people coming down Ivy that went straight through the stop sign toward Miramani. They did not go into the school. So you had 134 cars that were not involved with the school. That's not a lot on a daily basis, but it's over 24,000 trips in a year, in a school year, 180 days. So it is significant and I think it's a safety issue. Somebody was asking about how many came up. Let's see. From Coral, there were 48 that came up. So it's not a lot of traffic coming up from the south side. The total number of trips was something like 471. And, you know, there are 800 kids in the school. So it seems like there wouldn't be because there's 14 buses that stop. At each of those trips, a car is going by the bus stop as well as into the school. So I think it's a safety issue to try and minimize the number of trips that, you know, those sixth grade kids might be exposed to. Were there any other? Oh, there was one other thing. On, I think it was May 24th or something like that. I was in traffic, I dropped off some people to, at Bart. And I was coming back at the time when most of the traffic would be heading toward Miramani or Delray. But I could have turned left on I because I think I was before the cutoff time. At any rate, I continued on. And, and like Lisa said, it was nine minutes from Ivy Drive going up and over Coral and up the street at the entrance to OIS. So nine minutes. That compares unfavorably with if there's no traffic at all and you start at the left turn lane onto Ivy, it's two minutes. So it is, you know, fairly significant difference. Any other, can I answer any questions on these statistics here?
If anyone has questions, we can, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And we did get your public comment. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on item F9?
And because I wanted to check on exactly when finals was and whether or not the study was.
If you could just identify.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Paige Knitler and I have students, I'll have three at Miramante this year. I had two at OIS last year and one at Miramante. But I was just checking on when finals were in '24 and it was not that week. So it was the week after was finals. The week that the study was done, if it was the week with the 24th, was what they call dead week, when all students do go to class every day. So just to comment on that, that point. I would say for our family, the no left turn has affected us in the way that our Miramante student was in charge of driving our OIS students. And that definitely affected whether or not she could get to school early. So she couldn't go to Miramante early because she couldn't drop off her siblings as early. And so otherwise she'd have to drive down and drive around where it ended up negating the whole point of leaving the house early. So she found that she just couldn't get to Miramante very much earlier because basically it took too long to drop off her siblings. So that was the piece where it affected our family. But I, I don't really completely understand how, like right now, the fact that you can legally turn left there between eight and 8:30, you're going to have tons of cut through traffic of the Miramante students. And I don't really know how you get rid of that unless you just say there's never a left turn allowed from Maraga onto Ivy. So that's the only piece that I don't really understand how, how it gets fixed based on leaving it in place. It's not fixed.
Thank you. Can I actually ask a follow-up question of that speaker? Can you explain to me when you said for your Miramanti child who was trying to drop off OIS child, children early, was that before eight then?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. Because she was trying to get, her school started earlier, right? Her school started at 8:30 and theirs started at 8:45. So if she wanted to get to early, she had to drop them off still earlier, right? And she would try to get to school at eight. But then it took so long to do the Maraga thing that she was like, this is just not worth it. So she just, you know, stopped going early. But I mean, we had that option because my kids didn't have a zero hour. If they had, it would have been more problematic.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Whitney Marr. I live at 54 Ivy Drive with Doreen. So, you know, she was talking so fast, I just wanted to add a few things. One of the things was that the Zoom call with 41 members of our neighborhood on that call, I'm shocked that those numbers on the vote did not sustain the idea that the no left turn sign should remain because I'm sure we were trying to flood that meeting with our members and were trying to get our point of view across. So I questioned that and I'll, I'm going to relook at that, that, the veracity of that comment. You know, we've been working at this a long, long time. And I would just say that, you know, with the attitude that we all should work together. So if there is a dearth of ideas or if you need ideas, you should ask. Six hundred people come up with a tremendous number of ideas. And there are tremendous number of them that we aren't hearing about. Things change in the school system, things, early morning things, we, we know that. And we have to accommodate them. But just ask the question and, you know, we can get to the answers. I mean, we have people standing on the street just counting cars, just, just to know. So that is all I have to say about that. And please don't take down the no left turn sign. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on item F9? I want to thank everyone who's spoken. Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember G.
And, ma'am, can we ask Director Christie another question after listening to the public comment?
Yes.
Can you explain, Scott, was there consideration given to changing the hours of the no left turn? I'm just, I'm confused as to why we, you know, when Miramani changed to the 8:30 time, you know, letting them cut through between eight and 8:30 doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I'm, I'm just curious as to whether that was considered as part of the whole issue.
That I unfortunately don't know the answer to. It's a great question.
Vice there. When it comes back up here, I will answer it because I sat through all of the last four TSAC meetings that addressed this. The short of it is that you can't get the OIS community to school on time if you cut it off starting at eight, from eight to 8:30. That's when the OIS students and teachers are really needing to get to school. The window between the start times is too short to accomplish it by pushing it later. That would be the most obvious solution.
Yeah, and we are, we are in discussion now, I think. So we just might need to.
No, it's only 15 minutes between 8:30 and.
And the other thing, just to point out, is all the traffic that you would push from not going left on Ivy, if the congestion is between Ivy and the Miramanti turnoff at Coral, you're pushing double the traffic into the problem, right? You're pushing, but for people to get to Coral, they're not alleviating the congestion. You're doubling the congestion and you're making Coral more dangerous. So there's really no benefit if you take the majority of OIS people trying to get to school and you push them into the Miramanti intersection. What, what that was originally done is just to stop shortcuts, but not to keep OIS people from getting to school.
Right. So you're saying if there was a no left turn from eight to 8:30, that would in effect push OIS traffic and Miramanti traffic all, all of the OIS traffic would go over to Coral, which would make any sense. Yeah.
Right.
Is, I'm sure there's.
One speaker spoke about the start time of schools and why the school districts can't just get together and change the start time of school. And I'll say that that is a very complicated. And I'll say that that is a very complicated issue, and that when the governor changed the start times for all of the high schools, OIS did push back 15 minutes. But then it impacts the after-school activities and the teacher's contract and all sorts of other issues for OIS. So they didn't feel like they could push back their start time any further. So I don't think it's reasonable to think that OIS will change their start time to 9:00 because they already changed it to 8:45 to try to alleviate some of the burden of the traffic.
Councilmember Riley?
No question. I'm just going to make a comment. I'm, 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 want to go back to the timing of the study. It's the third week of May, and finals, I guess that was dead week, and then finals are the next week. But everybody takes AP exams, May 15th, May 5th through 15th. And that's a huge population that doesn't show up for exams, doesn't show up for dead week. Their history. So I don't really, I really don't like when this was done. I don't think we have good numbers. But, you know, there, there are other arguments being made that aren't based on numbers. But if you just look at the strength of this survey, these observations, I'm, I'm, I, I don't think they're reliable, even though I'm not an engineer.
Yeah. I'm just, I've got a kid who had AP exams, and they still make them come for dead week. They're not, they're still coming to class that week. I would also point out, when you look at the data, whether or not the absolute numbers are as big as they would be, the proportion of shortcuts to direct to OIS traffic, it's interesting data. So whether it's the best statistical information, they still captured what I thought was a pretty good pattern of sort of what shortcuts happened before 8:00 and the number of shortcuts of people bypassing OIS and going to the high school between 8:00 and 8:30. And I actually thought our community members' informal poll was relatively consistent with the study in that people are taking, I think the point is, a lot of people are taking that shortcut after 8:00. And that's something that I hope we can address in a serious way.
But they couldn't take it before 8:00. So it, it doesn't really give you data on what would happen if.
Although I've got to say, since I do this a lot, there's no traffic. And I think one of our, our, our strongest advocates for not taking the sign down said there's no traffic on Moraga Way before 8:00. And so why would you take a shortcut when you can get right to school?
Right. But if there's no traffic, then why wouldn't you just go to Coral and make?
Hold on, though. Delray starts at 8:00.
Okay.
Right? Wasn't that the data? Isn't that the, Delray starts at 8:00 now?
Yes, Delray does start at.
So. Okay. So they still do early bird and late bird sort of thing? They used to do that? Okay. So it's fewer, so doesn't that result in some traffic on Moraga Way before 8:00? I don't know.
Yes. Delray does result in traffic before 8:00.
Okay.
No doubt.
So I would think there would.
When I go to Coral, which is most of the time, but not all the time, I get right to Coral. And, and I guess that's the point, is we're not doing this because it necessarily adds, yes, it might add nine minutes, it might add three to five minutes. The point is, it's not solving the shortcut problem when Miramonte now starts at 8:30. It's, it's not solving the problem that was designed to solve. And the set of recommendations before us, in my opinion, is a very thoughtful approach to solving the actual problem that Miramonte kids are taking that shortcut between 8:00 and 8:30, and it's very concerning. Another thing that nobody asked about, but speed bumps on Artith were something that a lot of people asked about and wanted because that would be another way to allow people who live on that street to use it, but to make it an unappealing shortcut. And the problem is that right now, the TSAC can't do any speed bumps because the fire department is saying no to them all. But because that is not anybody's evacuation route, that's an internal road, I would hope that as part of our recommendations tonight, we might put that back on the table. Maybe we pilot the no-right, but speed bumps might be a better long-term solution than a no-right on Artith. But this set of questions and what can we do has been tossed around since the 90s. And this neighborhood group, you know, I, I thought their letters were so, it was so impressive, listening to them talk about all the things they did with the bus lanes and finding the money and getting the left turn in place when it was a conflict. And those no-U turns, I mean, all of the problems at the time, they did a really thoughtful and incredibly detailed job of organizing and solving. And I think all we're doing tonight is trying to do an update in light of the school schedule change to find more accurate solutions because that 7:00 to 8:00 no-left isn't solving the problem it was put there to solve. And so I, but I think we're building on a set of great solutions.
And one of the questions, is there any way, it, I, thank you for that. Because I think it makes a lot of sense. And one thing I was writing down here is the timing, right? With 8:00 to 8:30, what really bothers me, because I've had three new drivers, and they're not, I mean, let's just be honest, they're not great drivers, right? When they first learn how to drive. And so what really bothers me is that between 8:00 and 8:30, we have a lot of teenage drivers that are already now currently using Ivy Drive as a cut-through. And so I really like the note, for now at least, the no-right turn on Artith, because hopefully that will, you know, these other, will disincentivize using Artith as a cut-through. And, but, you know, you've got kids walking to OIS largely by themselves in that neighborhood, and then you have teenage drivers driving through from 8:00 to 8:30. Is there, I understand you can't make a no-left turn for just Miramonte high school kids, right? Which is what I really would love to do. But is there any, there's, I mean, I, I think, I'm sure with all these meetings over all these years, there's not, there's, there's really no way to solve for that, is there? Like, how do we solve for that? How do we? I don't know. That's not before us tonight, but I, it kind of is. That's, that's the real problem to me.
Well, I would add that Councilmember Hoxsey, several meetings ago, made it a matter initiated, and we talked about it in our strategic planning, that taking a more holistic look at school safety, I mean, there were so many good ideas about whether it's a four-way stop at Artith and Coral, or, or getting a long-term budget item in place to get sidewalks on Coral, meaningful safety improvements, like when you guys got that bus lane in, I can't imagine OIS without that bus lane. So really trying to think about what are the, the longer-term, bigger-picture things? I mean, this is a great start, and I'm happy to know it's a pilot because these might improve things, they might not. But we need to figure out those three schools as a set. I, I thought these recommendations made as much sense as anything I've heard in the last two years of going to these meetings. But I don't think we're done. I think we're, we're testing and measuring.
My only problem is the no-left turn on Ivy. I'm not opposed to the no-right turn on Artith. I certainly agree with looking at the four-way stop at Artith. I do think we need to look at a sidewalk and a long-term capital improvement plan there. I am concerned about all of our students walking. We do have students walking on Ivy between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning. We do have adults walking on Ivy between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning who want to be able to walk their dogs safely. I, I feel like we don't need to change the no-left turn sign. I, I agree that it doesn't solve the cut-through problem, which is 100% a problem. But I don't think taking away the calming measure that the residents of Ivy have been enjoying really solves anything either.
Don't they have sidewalks?
On Ivy, they have sidewalks. I was just going to say. Ivy, a lot, a lot of.
Only for, only for part of it. It's, in fact, the sidewalk doesn't go all the way to school, it goes to the bus lane, right?
It goes to the bus lane.
I went and looked at it this afternoon.
Yeah. Me too. That's.
I remember it was added.
And Coral and Artith and the other streets around there do not have sidewalks.
Right.
I mean, this kind of goes back to my question of what are we? You, you've paid an awful lot of attention, Brandon. What do you think we're, we're actually trying to solve here? I, I understand about trying to get to OIS on time. I'm, I, I'm horrified by the, because, hey, I had it too. How many kids, how many of your kids got traffic tickets? Right here, right here.
Accidents.
But I, the cut-through, you know, is just, is just awful because the students are, I hate the thought of dumping any, let's put it this way, I want to minimize the number of Miramonte speeding kids that are late running down any of those streets because they're just so careless and it's just so bad for the neighborhood. So I, I just, I'm still having a hard time understanding, I'm, I'm not having a hard time understanding that the whole network is a big, huge problem, and there's no really perfect fix. I'm just having a hard time understanding what we're.
I think, well, I, I'm glad you asked it that way. I think, I think Councilmember Hoxsey and I have a different, difference of opinion, and that's why you're hearing a little tension, is, in my opinion, what we are, what we're solving for is the problem of Miramonte kids using that as a shortcut. So how do we get the, the OIS community, buses, walkers, bikers, e-bikers, and parents dropping off all to OIS on time without pushing traffic past OIS into the Miramonte and Delray traffic unnecessarily? How do we do that in the safest way possible? What Councilmember Hoxsey is also responding to is neighbors who like the, the relative safety of not having cars there between 7:00 and 8:00, and their ability to walk dogs and use that neighborhood because of that relative quiet period. To me, traffic data should be about traffic and not neighbors who have enjoyed that extra quiet. I, I hear them, but the data does not support that sign for traffic purposes. But I think that's the only, when you say, what are we trying to accomplish? I think I see it as one goal, and I think Councilmember Hoxsey sees it more broadly. And I don't mean to speak for you, but if that's, if it seems like we're solving different problems, that's maybe what you're hearing.
Yeah. I, I, I think that we need to look at the cut-through issue, and I, I see it as a separate issue from the left turn from 7:00 to 8:00. I also understand, you know, the frustration people have when they're trying to get their students to school at OAS for jazz band, and my kids did all Mandarin, all those activities as well. And it's frustrating that you have to go further to get them there. On the other hand, it's not really that much further if there really isn't that much additional traffic. You know, it's sort of like, we're saying, on the one hand, we don't want to push the traffic into the Delray-Miramonte traffic lane, and on the other hand, there isn't that much at that time of day. So I, I think we can look at the cut-through problem and the Artith problem, and I think we definitely need to look at a four-way stop at Artith and Coral, and I think we need to look at some sidewalks and safety issues, all separate from changing the no-left, which I don't think we have to change to accomplish those other things.
So.
Please, I've been doing.
So there's, no, it's okay. So there's, I want to, I want to separate those issues though, right? Because the stop sign, I think is something that we want to, you know, a lot of these other things, I think we do want to, maybe you're hearing that there is an interest, or at least there's some interest in prioritizing them to the extent budget allows, right? And some of those are going to be more expensive than others, right? Obviously sidewalks, I would imagine, are more expensive than a stop sign, right? But a stop sign requires a traffic study and, and certain requirements. And, and I do think that, I, I don't, I think it was Councilmember G that, that mentioned that, I'm very familiar with that area. I lived off of Artith for six years when I first moved here, and so my kids walked to Delray and I walked to OIS. So same thing, right? And live in that area not far now. So, you know, that, that Coral intersection is, is, I agree, it is blind, and it is some, or not blind, but it does give me concern. Yeah, yeah. It gives me concern, and that's something. So improving pedestrian safety, to me, is one issue that I am hearing consensus that we want to maybe think about how we can prioritize. And I'm sure staff is also thinking about this, it's come out of the report. But that is separate from what's before us tonight. And the problem that I want to solve for, I think also, is this problem of cut-throughs. But with, I think the no-left turn sign made complete sense when Miramonte started at 8:00 o'clock, right? Which is when I was dropping my kids off. But I don't know what it's, what it's solving for. I don't know that it's, it's not really deterring, deterring that many Miramonte kids right now because the ones that are using the cut-through to go to school are coming later. Are, are, you know, looking to get out of that Miramonte traffic, that Moraga Way traffic, you know? And really, what we need is, we need more, you know, we need to get our, our community out of cars and into buses more, right? Which is, which is part of the big problem, why we have all this traffic. But again, that's also another, another very big problem around here. But I don't, you know, I, I, it doesn't make a lot of, I guess I, this traffic study and these commi, these, these measures, to me, make a lot more sense because they keep, they keep the kid, you know, the, the, those Miramonte drivers off Artith, right? And off, off Coral.
Right. But it will put.
For now. So as a pilot measure, I mean, I, I, I would, I'm leaning towards, you know, favoring this as a, as a pilot measure with the recognition that we, we really do need to keep a close eye on it and reevaluate it, you know, and make sure that when we do reevaluate it, we do it at a time when traffic patterns are sort of as normalized as they can be, you know? And, and, you know, keep a close eye on it and also really listen to the community about it. So that's sort of where I'm leaning on it. I don't know where.
I have another issue with the, the, the study, and Councilmember G brought it up. How do you, if the sign says, don't turn left, how does your study study left-hand turns? I mean, most people aren't breaking that rule. So they need to take that sign away for it to be a decent survey, so I can see how many people are turning left. I don't know. I don't see how this is reliable. I, I don't see any reason for changing the left-hand turn. All the other things are great.
I, I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Riley about the, and I brought that up earlier about the, you know.
Oh, sorry.
You can't really tell who's, who's turning left when it says not to.
Yeah.
But I worry when you block the right onto Artith, then all those kids are just going to stay on Ivy, so that will push that traffic onto Ivy. I do like the idea of speed bumps on Artith, and I'm willing to try the no-right on Artith and have, see what that's like. But my vote would be to keep the no-left turn sign on Moraga Way, and then try the no-right turn on Artith and see what happens. I'm not sure about the time change on the other signs because I feel like that's confusing, and I, I just don't know if that's really happening or not, or people are making a U-turn and coming back, or, I, I don't know if that's necessary or not necessarily.
Aren't the time changes on the other signs trying to be more in sync with the Miramonte 8:30 AM? So that they're, I mean, they're trying to target those folks who are going to Miramonte.
Right. But I'm just worried that if some sets of signs say 7:30 to 8:30, and you leave the no-left from 7:00 to 8:00, then it just creates some confusion along Moraga Way. I don't, I don't know if people are actually making, if, if you were to remove the no-left turn sign, then people wouldn't have any reason to make the U-turn.
But I think the, what they're trying to keep people from doing, you're right, that they wouldn't have the reason to make the U-turn to get back to Ivy, but they would still be going left for the other shortcuts. And so I think what they were trying to do is to say.
The Whitehall shortcut.
If Ivy's open, we want to make sure that the other shortcuts that they would take as a result, either the, yeah, either the Whitehall needs to be better matched with the actual school time, not the Ivy prohibition. And, but yeah, it's the only thing you no longer would have a problem with is the U-turn to get back to Ivy's right.
Right. That one probably could go away.
I just can't, I mean, I'm, I'm just surprised that my fellow councilpeople want to keep a sign up saying no-left on Ivy from 7:00 to 8:00. It's really frustrating for all of us who try to get to OIS between 7:00 and 8:00. And I don't. try to get to OIS between seven and eight. And I don't anymore, but I, I was a customer.
I was too.
And doesn't, when nobody's taking the shortcut. And that's what's, it's so strange to me that just for, for historic reasons, you would want to leave that sign up when there doesn't appear to be any evidence that Miramani, that if Maraga Way is not congested and people are not taking that shortcut, why you would want to keep that sign up? I'm not following the logic.
I feel like the city made a promise to the residents and that, you know, yes, it was 25 years ago, but I feel like there's some reason to protect that neighborhood from additional traffic to the extent we can without causing a larger problem. That's, that's how I see it. Okay.
I don't like this study. But to hear, I'm hearing all of this happy noise over here.
There's no additional public comment at this time.
This is about the neighbors would like their peace and quiet. To be clear, this is not about the traffic. It's not about the data and it's not about the reason we put up traffic signs. It's that the neighbors really like the peace and quiet. And I, I don't think that's a good reason that we as a city council, especially for precedent reasons, should be maintaining a sign solely for the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood. If that's the reason, I would ask people to think carefully about their decision.
So those of you that are closer than I am, a time wise to using it. So when do people, what time do people most want to be going to OIS now? It starts at eight forty-five, right? But there's all kinds of stuff why people have to be there earlier.
There's, there's, there's earlier periods, right? There's zero periods. But I mean, I.
And is the, I guess the question I'm also asking is, is the reason that this is being recommended or the reason you feel strongly about it is because you want people headed to OIS to be able to turn left onto Ivy?
I think it bothers me because it's pointless. And I thought this would be a no-brainer. When the letter came in 2023 suggesting that the sign had been put up when the schools started earlier and the sign, it's basically moot, right? The sign is no longer doing what it was put up to do. So we should take it down because it's blocking people who do have a valid reason. It's, it's not a huge problem we're solving. It's just that the sign is moot. It's not solving any problem at all right now. And it's been a two-year battle because this neighborhood enjoys having the quiet hour. And that's, that's the crux of the, and then the rest of the problem that we're trying to solve is what you do about it. Right?
So I'm sorry, we can't, we, we can't have public comment right now.
Other council members can correct me, but the public session is closed.
I, I will say though, I, I do, I, I don't see it as that black and white. I don't at all. I see it as, because the sign was there to, to stop cut-throughs primarily of Miramani kids, I believe. But from seven to eight AM, which is a full hour before school starts, right? And that really solves the problem of cut-throughs. I mean, there's not a lot of high school kids that are going to get up and drive to Miramani at six thirty, right? But now we're in a lot, there's, it's a lot more fluid now because you've got all three schools starting in that one hour. And so now with Miramani starting at eight thirty, there are kids that are going to Miramani by eight. Not all of them, not the bulk of them, but some of them. So I think it is solving some of that problem now because it's in place from seven to eight. But, and I do think that if we remove the sign, we will probably see some more traffic from Miramani cut-throughs. I just don't know how much. I believe that most of the kids that are going to Miramani and doing a cut-through through Ivy are doing it from eight to eight thirty. And that's what I would love to stop. And I don't know, think that we can. So I'm, I'm really kind of, you know, torn on this because I do see a valid, I also think that, you know, and again, maybe I'm partial to it because I did live in that neighborhood for six years while I had little kids and walked them around. And was sometimes one of those moms driving at the last minute to school, I will be honest. And so I think that, I don't know, I, I guess I'm, you know, there's a lot of traffic in that area. There's some sidewalks, but not a lot. And we do have a lot of children walking around by themselves. Right. And that starts, and with Delray, that's why I was asking about the Delray drop-off because if it's, if they're still doing the early bird, late bird thing, you're getting, having an eight AM drop-off and then in, I think in like an eight thirty or eight forty-five. So you've got, you've got three schools going to school at the same time in the same neighborhood and all of Arinda going to the, two of the schools, right? The school age children. So it's just a really, really difficult problem. So I, I really don't see this as, you know, I will say to members of the public, I don't see it as black and white on either side. I think this is one of the hardest problems we have to solve. And I think staff is doing, you know, a very thoughtful, as thoughtful a, a job as they can in solving, trying to solve this. And so whatever we decide tonight, it will be a pilot program and we will continue to study it. I think there's consensus on all that.
So. I would still kind of torn, you know, very willing to try the no right on Artith and see if that helps anything. I would love to see speed bumps put in on Artith if there's any ability to get the MOFD to agree.
Mira, I'd love to figure out a way to help you all along on this.
I know, it's a tough issue.
I, I guess my question, and maybe it's more for Scott, is there a way to decouple the no left turn on Ivy from the other safety improvements that you're also recommending tonight so that we could spend a little bit more time on that matter?
I think it's possible, however.
We, we might want to entertain the idea of giving us some flexibility on adjusting the time. Because leaving it at the same time, it, it's, it's somewhat, I, I don't think it really, again, serves a purpose as, as we've contended, but maybe there's a way to change the time to be more in sync. So.
What if it were something like six forty-five to seven forty-five? It wouldn't, because it would allow teachers and those who needed to be at OIS to get there by eight, but it would also have that quiet time. I don't know. That's down the road though, I guess.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out with schools starting before our next potential meeting, is there certain improvements that we could all agree upon tonight and then maybe bring back the discussion about the left turn on Ivy to later time? Because it wasn't agendized for any different time, I would not be comfortable with it taking any action that would be different than what was either proposed. So I would either say for the discussion tonight, if there can't be any consensus, if there's no consensus on Ivy Drive and if Scott tells me that we could decouple that from the other safety or improvements that are being proposed as part of the traffic order, have a continued discussion around Ivy Drive and potentially looking at what was in the report as medium-term solutions, which were time changes to that no left turn. I just don't know with the way that the agenda was put together and the description and just conferring with OSEF, that would be an appropriate thing to do tonight because you don't have other people that might be interested in talking about that time change here.
Well, and City Manager, if I may, just the TSAC spent two years grappling with the, the puzzle of all the, because it's, I, I don't know how comfortable I am with the city council who is not able to do an iterative discussion. It, it feels like it's a, that's, this is a poor forum to get to what is a complicated, public works-driven recommendation. So if we're not going to be supportive of, of what is kind of a, a set of, of coordinated recommendations, we might need to just remand it to TSAC. I support what is being brought forward tonight. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve F, wherever we are, F nine, to see if there is consensus. If there is not, my recommendation would be to remand it back for a more sophisticated, you know, to, to give advice as to what we want fixed and to ask for people who do this for a living to maybe bring us back a fix. So I'm going to make a motion to approve F nine as suggested with the set of, of recommendations to take down the seven to eight restriction on turning left, the associated time changes to the other signs, the no right on Artith and the signal timing change that would then be, be done to deal with the implications of that sign coming down.
So I heard a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
As drafted, yes.
As drafted.
Resolution number forty-one twenty-five is drafted.
Thank you. Yes. So I have another question. So if we bring it forward with this, if we second it, then can we still discuss it? Or are we going to go right to a vote?
No, you can discuss it.
Okay. So go ahead and second it and then I'll want to ask a question. No, I don't want to second it because I want to make a counter as a motion. So. So it's not seconded, it's not a motion?
Right. It doesn't sound like there's a second.
Okay.
Motion dies.
Okay.
So did you have a.
Before we put another motion out, I'm still struggling with how you, how this study was done when the sign said, don't turn left. How, how does a, how, how, how do you get good data? I would really want to hear more from the, um, people who did the survey. There's a sophisticated way to do it, but it just doesn't make sense to me.
In hindsight, I would have definitely invited the traffic consultant here tonight. Given the number of questions. And I can't precisely answer your question on how they do that. I mean, certainly they can look at windows around it and then draw conclusions based on overall traffic patterns. But your, your question's good. I'm not sure how that process works.
I sure want more information. I'd like to see that sign taken down for a week and test it and see how much, how much damage or how, how little damage is done, how much volume there is.
That could be arranged.
So that.
Can't be arranged unless there's a traffic order to arrange for that.
Right. That's.
I'm just saying, I don't like this data.
Understood. I'm just responding to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Staff's comment that we could try it. We can't try it without a traffic order to do that. And that could be a short-term traffic order, but nonetheless, it would require a traffic order. So at this point, I think you guys need to either resume your discussion or we can make a motion or if the council is not willing, I know there was one motion that failed, but if there's no desire to make a motion, you could give us direction to take this back and look at some other things. For example, Councilmember Riley's point of better understanding how you could do that or ask us to put in place a limited traffic order during the school year so that we can actually measure the seven to eight traffic and get back to you. All of those things, I think, probably shouldn't happen tonight. And if there's no desire or thought that decoupling the first item in the traffic order for the remainder of items, I would say just don't take action on any of the recommendations tonight and give us some direction about what you'd like to see and we'll be back to you hopefully by the second meeting in August. If some of those items are shorter term items, for example, a temporary lift of the no left turn to do additional study.
May I just, um, for people's consideration, I think a short, changing signs that people are really used to, especially people dropping kids off during school years and, and new drivers, feels like a recipe for people to get tickets or for us to get bad data. So if we're going to make a change and measure, I would suggest it be longer term, like a, a three-month or something and with good communication. I, I do worry about sort of willy-nilly sign changes around what is already a messy situation.
Yeah. And I, I'm just, I was just throwing that out. I, I really want to talk to the traffic, the, the people who did the survey. They, I mean, this is their business. They must have a good explanation for giving us numbers when the sign says you can't turn left. Yeah. I don't know.
I, I have a couple of items, you know, for consideration to bring it back that I think would help. I, even if we don't have the money right now and even, I, I understand that this was like something that could be implemented like faster, but I would like to see a more complete package where I think you heard a lot of consensus that we wanted to look again at more safety at the Coral Artith intersection. And even if we don't have the capital improvement money for the sidewalks, I think we ought to really look at that. But the other suggestion I have is, again, part of the reason I'm so hesitant tonight and I, and I don't dispute that there was a lot of thought and a lot of TSAC meetings and a lot of discussion. But somehow the way it got captured here, again, I'm still not getting the answers to the questions I'm most wanting to understand, which is who's trying to get where, by what time? And I just, I'm not getting it. And so if it was just clearer what we were trying to do, we're trying to adjust this for the OIS community and we're, hey, I, I just wish I could understand that better.
One thought I'm having, Brandon, is maybe we should bring this up with the two by two when we have our next meeting with the school district at, and talk about the OIS aspects of this.
That feels like it's just going to drive, uh, what would we accomplish with the school board's help?
Well, I think talking to the superintendent about sort of what she views the needs are her students and staff getting to school at what time. And, you know, so we have a better understanding of how many students exactly are actually trying to get to OIS before the eight forty-five official start. I don't think, I, I don't have a good sense of if that's 20 students or 150. I also don't know. I mean, I, I know changing start times is a big deal and it would be very difficult. But I don't know if we asked if there's any flexibility to change it 15 minutes and make it nine. So then you could change the, the time from instead of seven to eight, seven thirty to eight thirty across the board and actually have it be a meaningful stop to the cut-through. I don't know. I mean, maybe we should ask it directly.
My only thought there is, the two by two only meets a couple of times a year and it, things don't happen very efficiently. So what I would love to do is have whoever's working on this, like the TSAC, talk to the superintendent directly and then we should also talk about it. But I don't want it to be this drawn-out year-long process for a conversation that could happen between, say, a, a staff member and something like that so that we get the.
Yeah, I know.
Data without, uh.
I think we have something planned in August and I, I think the schools are out till the beginning of August now anyway. So you're not going to get anything before then, but it just was a thought.
So what I'm, I'm hearing is that there is not forgetting consensus, a majority that's willing to vote or recommend this today. But there is an interest in revisiting this soon. Do we need a, we just don't act on it, but.
You wouldn't act on it.
Provide guidance.
Some direction to us as to what you'd like to see returned to you. Uh, it sounds, what I've heard, and I don't know if it's consensus yet, but a more holistic look at the issues beyond just the traffic impact issues. It's the school safety issues. How to improve maybe site distance or this, I think the other piece of this was the stop sign at Artith and Coral. And maybe provide maybe a better overview of how we're approaching, or at least from the staff's perspective, how we're looking at and trying to approach the issues that exist. And we could, if we need to do additional analysis and if the council is interested in giving us direction to come back to you with a limited traffic order to remove the no left turn for a period of time. So we could better study and analyze that during the school year. We'd have to come back to you with a limited, more limited traffic order for your consideration. We could certainly do that in August and get the ball rolling. If you give us some direction on how long you'd like that no left turn to exist for.
May I ask, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Is there a way we could set up, um, like a study session or whatever the lingo is with the traffic engineer? Or the, whoever did the study, sorry. Uh, just to get more information.
To have the consultants here for, for, or when we, when we revisit this, have the consultants.
Or a separate study session?
Okay.
So that.
Oh.
It's a little bit more, um.
Like a special meeting to review it? Is that what you're asking?
Well, it's separate time than this time in this sort of setting.
Like we, the way we.
Maybe in the Sarge room and have the traffic.
And it was strategic planning was a steady session in the Sarge room. So that's what I was picturing. Maybe we get into the meat of this and on, on all. on all the lists, all the items on your list, I would add that we need to get more information from the person who did the study. And then I would like an answer to the question that Councilmember G keeps saying, asking is what are we trying to achieve? And what does this achieve if you take away the sign? I still don't get it. I'm hung up on that as well. Yeah.
And I think That makes sense to me.
If we have a study session, we should definitely include at least the Arinda School District, if not also Akalani's because Delray and OIS obviously are a part of this.
I don't, I don't think they need to, I disagree on that. I don't think they need to be part of the study session. I think I would like some more data, like how many kids over this next school year at Miramoni High School arrive, you know, have a reason to be at school before eight thirty, right?
Before regular start time.
Yeah, before regular, same for OIS, right? Officially, how many, you know, what time do teachers, you know, teachers are a smaller group. It's not that they're not in a very important group, but they are a smaller group. So the bulk of the traffic, this is, traffic is our job, right? So I don't, I think it needs to be only, I feel strongly it should be only city council. They're welcome to.
We can make sure that they know that
Be aware of.
Having these discussions, I could talk
But I don't want to join.
Consultants, yeah.
I would also like to ask it before that meeting. If the city manager or somebody on your team could reach out to the fire department and I know the TSAC has a blanket no speed bumps rule, and so I don't want us to get a no before we ask the question the right way because Artith is so different from the evacuation route problem that created that prohibition. And that would be, that would be a really helpful solution if we can get have a meaningful conversation on that before we talk. So
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have direction. No action is looking like there's no action tonight, but some direction to staff and then we'll be back to you. And so are we interested in the limited traffic order to come back to you? I As part of an analysis, or do you want to just talk about it in a study session? And give further direction from the study session on that? If we look at the resolution, there's items three and four are are the Southway Court and Whitehall Drive. No left turn signs and is changing the hours on those from seven to eight to seven thirty to eight thirty AM. I thought I heard consensus on that. Am I wrong?
Well, the reason they're earlier now is because if you can't turn left from seven to eight, it keeps people from using those as other shortcuts between seven and eight. So you could change the time, but again,
It would get very confusing.
It needs, it's better evaluated together.
Okay.
Okay.
It would get very confusing and hard to monitor, is my answer.
All right. So I'm hearing direction that we will come back to you in some sort of study work session and have more discussion around this issue. And we will try to work to do that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and I do want to thank staff for all the work on this and all the community members who are here.
Thank you. Thank you for your input from firsthand experience. That helps a lot.
A lot of firsthand experience.
Yeah, maybe too much.
Including traffic.
Okay, that moves us through our consent calendar to our public hearing.
Policy matters.
Okay, we have no would any members of the public like to, we have no public hearing tonight, rather. And that takes us to our policy matters. And our first policy matter is a study session on the inclusionary housing ordinance, which is an implementing action of our housing element. And we have a staff report, I believe, from our consultants.
Forgetting, forgetting this up. I'm actually with the city. I'm a staff member, Christine Thompson. Great. Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Malcony and council members. Thank you, Linda. We're going to shift gears a bit in two ways. One
And, you know, I'm sorry, for those of you who are here from the public, thank you for being here, but we're moving on to another agenda item. So if we could ask you to take any conversations out into the hall, thank you.
So, yeah, we're shifting, we're shifting direction in two important ways. One, this is housing. Two, this is a study session. So, so I just wanted to note that this is part of the housing element. It's an implementing action. And and we're here very specifically talking about the economic, the economic feasibility and market study. And so the the charge of the city is to evaluate inclusionary housing ordinances as a way to increase affordable housing in Arinda. And then also to decide if this is an appropriate policy objective for the city. So what we will do today is I'll do a quick presentation. We do have the consultant here as well, who will talk very directly to the study. And and both of those materials, the study and then also the focus group conversation summary memo were included in your packet. So hopefully, okay. So this is a project that is being undertaken, associated with the housing element, associated with the Department of Planning. So LaShawn Cross, Director of Planning, is in the audience. I am Christine Thompson. And we have two other staff members, Darren and Catherine, working on this as well. Just a little bit of background. This has been discussed at two prior city council meetings, but it was really kicked off by the certification of the housing element back in January twenty twenty three. There was a city council discussion introducing it and getting background in May and then further discussion in October in twenty twenty three. In the interim, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Transit Oriented Communities Policy was released. It does have direction around inclusionary housing ordinances as a recommendation to become consistent with their TOC policy, should a municipality be interested in doing that. And then this particular study with the consultant was initiated just in March of twenty twenty five. So this is, this is to study it more thoroughly and get, you know, really understand the direction for the city of Arinda. So just a quick background on why inclusionary housing ordinances are adopted. We are in a housing crisis. We need housing to provide for our population. And then affordable housing as a component of housing is really just increasing the ability for potentially bringing bringing a more diverse group. And that means people who want to live where they work. That also means seniors who want to live near their families. So there are some positive economic aspects and then there's the overall diversity of the community. It is interesting to note that in, this was in the study that Lafayette, Maraga, Walnut Creek, Danville, San Ramon, they are sort of comparable communities that were in the study, they all have adopted IHOs. This came up with the Planning Commission. We were at the Planning Commission last week, the question of is the IHO required? It is part of the housing element. It is an implementing action. It is suggested as an easy way to show conformance in the housing element. But the the language is that it is, it needs to be determined appropriate and then adopted after that. So, but there, but if it's not determined appropriate and not adopted, there are other things in the housing element that may be harder to to pursue that do need to be adopted. So it's, it's really understanding the housing ordinance or housing element altogether. Just a background on the twenty twenty three May conversations. The city council was asked to really focus on five key parameters of an inclusionary housing ordinance. The size of the development, the percentage of affordable units, the best mix of affordable units, the in lieu fee and whether development incentives should be part of that conversation. And just on the background, the staff and at that point, it was the city manager Biggs, you know, noted that it is common to have a ten unit threshold that not have the smaller projects need to include, have this affordable component included. The idea that it might be a 10% or 15% of the total development that would have to be affordable. That that is common and used in many inclusionary housing ordinances. Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Can you please define affordable for all of us? Are you talking about the cost of the unit itself or the income bracket of the people who would purchase or live in the unit?
Sure, it is income bracket and it will be much more clear in the next presentation. So this is really just background.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sure, sure. So and then the question about, you know, the in lieu fee, it has been required for fractional units. It has been required for small projects. And then the question about development incentives. There certainly can be concessions and waivers to offset any costs for affordable units. So at that time in May, there were, there were, there was a robust discussion. The discussion really focused on what the staff had presented. Said, you know, 10 might be reasonable, but incentivizing housing development is important and don't want to inhibit that. There was a feeling that 10 to 15 might be a good range, but that 10 might create more units. And if the goal is to create units, then that's, it might be important to be at the lower end. Agree that the range of unit sizes is preferred. So if if a typical development has a mix of three, two and one units, that the affordable unit should also be that comparable mix of three, two and one in terms of their size and distribution. And then the in lieu fee at that time undecided, the council didn't feel like there was enough information. And then in the question of incentives was maybe density bonus, perhaps parking reduction. But that was the beginning of that conversation. There was a second conversation in October, a lot of the same, you know, the same questions. More information at that time. And I think the discussion evolved. So there was an acknowledgement that relative to the size of developments, most jurisdictions, the peer jurisdictions are between five and eight as the small unit, so they're not up at 10. The percentage of affordable units, it's still the 10 to 15%. But that also interacts with the density bonus and you'll hear more from the consultant about that. So that you're already getting waivers and concessions. There's still agreement that the proportionate unit sizes is preferred. And then the in lieu fee was becoming a greater part of the conversation. But there was a feeling that it's, yes, in lieu fee is, has potential, but its study is needed. And if you could have a flexible funding to potentially support 100% affordable or some other part of the housing element that that might, that might be helpful. And then back to the development incentives, the idea that that there is some qualification already happening with other state laws and opportunities that have come forward. So tonight, tonight, we are looking at the economic feasibility and market study. And there are preliminary, preliminary recommendations in that study. And the consultant is really looking for direction on that. Then moving forward with a recommendations memo, which would have, you know, a set of true recommendations, not just preliminary recommendations that includes the public feedback, the Planning Commission, the city council and any other public comments that come on in those sessions. So just quick next steps, going to then, so to the recommendations memo and then to the drafting of an ordinance. And then we're looking at a schedule. Again, this is predicated on on the fact that this is an appropriate and and desired to be adopted. But thinking about a planning commission hearing in August and a city council hearing in September with a final inclusionary ordinance. So that is just the quick background. Now we're going to bring the consultant up to talk about the economic feasibility and market study in detail.
Thank you. And does the clerk have and do they have the presentation loaded? Great. Oh, terrific. So pleased to be here. Back in Arinda, my name is Dave Bergman. I'm Director at Lysol Wise Consulting. I'm joined actually online by Ethan Stan and Jason Gershon-Friedberg, who helped prepare the study. I may, if there's a question that I can't answer, I may check in with the two of them. But hopefully we should be able to cover all of the information. Again, this is a study session and a desire to present some background information on an inclusionary housing ordinance, a program for the city of Arinda and some initial considerations for that program. So I understand from staff that the council is very well versed in issues related to the inclusionary housing ordinance. So these preliminary slides are really for public information to provide some context because I understand that you've addressed these issues a number of times in recent years and also again through your housing element process. So in general, it's important to talk about what an inclusionary housing ordinance is. It's a land use regulation. It's not an exaction. It's not a fee. It's a land use regulation that requires developers to include affordable housing units. And what that means are units that are accessible to individuals in certain predefined income brackets. I'll give some details about that. So the affordability in this case doesn't mean lower cost or something that I could necessarily find affordable. When I say I, the general public would find affordable, but but corresponds to some specific criteria based on the area median income of Contra Costa County. So over 170 jurisdictions have adopted inclusionary housing ordinances in California since the nineteen seventies. However, there was some ambiguity in state law that made it difficult to determine if they were applicable to rental units and also what authorities municipalities had in imposing this development requirement. That was largely resolved in twenty seventeen with the passage of AB fifteen oh five. And that focused on the city's ability to apply these requirements for inclusionary housing to rental projects. And it also required that it is included in the zoning ordinance and that alternative compliance options exist for the rental portions if an inclusionary housing requirement is adopted. And again, as staff mentioned, a number of your neighboring communities, Maraga, Lafayette, Walnut Creek, Danville and San Ramon, San Ramon, rather, have currently have adopted IHOs in response. So what is this program here that we've been engaged to? The city of Arinda is undertaking a comprehensive study to look at the feasibility of an IHO as a requirement of its six cycle housing update. So the city has committed through the housing element process to study whether or not an IHO is feasible. So the project goals here are to determine whether or not an IHO would be feasible without inhibiting, creating a new constraint on development in Arinda and then also to develop an ordinance that would be legally sound and then addresses community goals. So the point of this conversation is our second study session. We had one with the Planning Commission. Is an opportunity for public feedback, feedback from the council before it was from the appointed commissioners that could be included in a set of more formal recommendations that would then be translated into an ordinance for your consideration. That's our scope of services where we are today. This is the project timeline. So we're in the study sessions and a staff has mentioned in their report, here's the timeline for the project again with a goal of coming back in September. Should you, as a body, decide a, to consider an inclusionary housing ordinance that reflects what we have heard both in a focus groups. We had a series of focus groups with nonprofit and for profit developers active in the, this market as well as community members who were invited by staff to provide their perspective for us on the utility and importance of of inclusionary housing and what its role can be in the housing dynamics, the housing market in the city of Arinda. So again, a quick review of action item three G, which is included in the housing element. Again, to determine the appropriateness of an IHO. Again, to determine the appropriateness of an IHO. And if determined appropriate, adopt an inclusionary ordinance within one year of making that determination. So that's the language that was in the adopted housing element. The key considerations that are pointed out are the project size threshold, a percentage of affordability, design and timing requirements, a fee in lieu amount, or an alternative method of compliance. Generally, it's fee in lieu, but there are alternatives as well that you could allow. The question of any developer incentives and then also how it would be, the program would be administered. Which again, we are going to provide, and I use the word recommendations, the word is too strong because they're points for you to consider, to hear your reaction and to sculpt ultimately what comes out. Staff had informed us again that this body had wrestled with this question in the past and that it wasn't, a study session shouldn't be one that we sort of talk about ideas in the abstract, but give you specific points of the ordinance that you can react to. So please keep that in mind that this is designed for you to modify and question and they're not a formal recommendation at this stage. One thing that has changed in recent years is the issuance of the Transit Oriented Communities Policy or the TOC policy by the MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So they have policies that require communities, if they want to have access and be competitive for the One Bay Area Grant, Cycle Four, as well as other discretionary MTC grants. They have requirements that the communities adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance with minimum affordability percentages, with specific income targets and with specific percentages. And we'll talk about those. And much of the area within Arinda that is zoned for multifamily housing, not all, but much of that, those parcels are within that one half mile radius. So you see on the map where that covers. It also covers a number of sites or of parcels that are zoned for single family residential as well as mixed use commercial, et cetera. So as part of this analysis, LWC undertook a market study. And again, this isn't news for the community, but that the Arinda housing market is characterized by limited supply and consistently high home values. There's a, an appreciative, there's definitely a premium over Contra Costa County as a whole for residential property here in Arinda. So a single family home prices are notably higher than in surrounding areas. And right now, recent observations are around 1.9 to $2 million on median price for a single family home. Now this gets to the question about household incomes and what we mean by affordability. So affordability is tied to an annual income limit that is, these tables are promulgated by California Department of Housing and Community Development based on federal regulations from HUD. And what they do is they determine a median income for household, varying household sizes. So right now in Contra Costa County, the median household income for a family of four is a little under $160,000. And then there are categories that are legally defined based on a percentage of that area median income. So when we're going to be talking about, for example, low income housing, that's 80% of the area median income. That implies a household income with a family of four of $125,000. So this is not housing for the indigent. Actually, if you look at it on a full-time basis, that's, you know, with two home, with two members of the household working full-time, that gets you to about a $30 an hour wage. So that gives you an idea of the occupations that are associated with an 80% AMI in Contra Costa County. So one of the issues that came up during the planning commission hearing and what we expected, we might want to refer back to this slide is, where are we in relation to our neighbors? We want to be in the middle. We don't want to be extreme. We don't want to be too high, we don't want to be too low. So can we have a summary of where our neighbors are? So this is up here, my guess is during our conversation, we may turn back to it. But you see a range between 10 and 15% of an inclusionary requirement. The unit, the unit threshold can include all residential projects up to projects larger than eight. And then an in lieu fee as well generally expressed in dollars per square foot. So these are numbers to consider in coordination with your neighbors, but also again, to keep in mind that, that if the city is interested in being compliant with the MTC's TOD policies, that there are higher thresholds that are required in that policy than these neighboring communities have in place for the most part. So what was done? Working with staff, we tested three typical projects that would be developable in Arinda given the zoning code and the zoning code updates that are required to be implemented through the housing element. So we looked at a project in the RH40, in the DCOR, the Downtown Core, and in a single family RL10. And these typical projects differ slightly in their allowable densities per acre and the resulting gross building area and net total number of units that could be produced. There's also a requirement within the downtown to not allow for surface parking. So these are parked in a podium configuration. And there is also a requirement for a mixed use component. So that was modeled in the downtown. So looking at full rent, these rental projects. And so the average market rate in the RH40, about 5,000. In the downtown, similarly about 5,000. So I understand it's about $5,000 a month. That's what these apartments' market rate would be. And the gross unit development cost ranges between about $500,000 a unit in the RH40 because it can be surface parked to over $600,000 in the downtown because it's required to be, well, it's not allowed to have surface parking, we modeled it as podium parking because that would fit. There's a slight differentiation in price between the 100% market rate and the 15% affordable because permits and fees are discounted on affordable units. Sorry.
Just wondering, were financing costs included in this or did you just look at development cost?
Yes, finance costs are included. And they're looking at current capitalization rates and current interest rates. So cap rate I think was 6.5% and I think, I have to double check, it's in the report. The interest rate, seven something, but we looked at current market rate. They assume conventional bank financing, which is a really important point. Because typically, in contemporary environment, there's a lot of, of private equity that doesn't pay any, doesn't pay market interest rates. And then also there may be circumstances where there's a lower cost basis on the land. So if someone's been carrying the land for a long period of time, they may have a lower development cost as well. But you can't model every contingency. That being said, looking at a hurdle rate of around 8% for a rental project, the yield on costs suggest, so that would be the capitalized value of the income stream that you would have from the rental units, suggests feasibility in the RH40 and in the downtown core for both 100% market rate and a project that included 15% of the units affordable at 80% of AMI. Okay, so that's the, the low income, 80% of AMI. Looking at for sale, we also brought the single family residential in. And in this case, the for sale unit prices are a little bit higher because generally speaking, finishes, development conditions for condominiums in the multifamily case and for the single family homes, they tend to be a little bit more than for rental units. So the gross development cost for the, for the multifamily ranges from about 600,000 to 670,000 per dwelling unit. That's all inclusive, that's land, that's soft costs, permits, financing costs, hard costs, all of that. And then for the, in the RL10, about $1.9 million per dwelling unit. And again, some of that is because the city has relatively large land requirements and large lot requirements in single family zones. The return on cost hurdle rate is a little bit higher, more like 12% for something like this. But we found that the return on cost is feasible for both 100% market rate, the affordable project. The downtown at 100%, but not with the 15% affordable. And the key issue here again is that parking cost, which is a substantial factor affecting feasibility. Looking in the RL10, we tested it to the lowest possible single unit size, so one unit over the whole project. Turned out to be about 4%. And the return on cost for that suggests that it would not be feasible for sale, to have an inclusionary for sale. And it makes sense, the gap is enormous between what a household of four that is at 80% of AMI and, you know, an almost $2 million unit. So these are areas to consider that we would like to go over with you. And, and again, these are areas for consideration and they are preliminary items for you to provide feedback, to ask questions and to sharpen, to have recommendations for a project and program that you are comfortable moving forward with. This review is a key opportunity to provide guidance from the council, as it was with the commission, as well as an opportunity to receive public comment. The topic areas that we'll present are going to be shaped by the requirements of the housing element and the MTC TOC policies, as well as best practices and practices of your neighboring communities. And again, the MTC TOC policy is a target that the city can opt into. There are advantages to it, but there's nothing that is required. It's not like the housing element where you're essentially entering into a contract with, with the state. So the first area to consider would be an inclusionary percentage requirement. And as we demonstrated in the feasibility analysis, to require a 15% of units, that would be a 15% inclusionary requirement. 15% at 80% of AMI. Why did we use that number? Well, because it is compliant with the MTC TOC policy. So if you go below 15%, you will be out of compliance and ineligible for One Bay Area Grants, Cycle Four, or not competitive for One Bay Area, Cycle Four Grants and other discretionary MTC programs. So that's, the 15% is there, but it is, it is feasible. And it may make some individual projects financially infeasible though, particularly in the downtown core with the structured parking requirement. So that's an issue to consider. And that could be something that is a constraint on housing production under that circumstance. Citywide application is not required by the MTC TOC policy. So you could select to only require that within the half mile of the station. However, that does not pick up all of the multifamily zoned properties in the city. So that's a balance on that. And then you could create a circumstance where if you limited the IHO to just the TOC, development costs might be, or development might be more attractive just outside of it and work counter to your idea of having affordable housing developed near transit. So these are all things to consider, what, there's always trade-offs with every policy choice. So that's why we put these as issues to consider. These, you know, we struggled with the word recommendation. We want them areas to consider. This is not an advocacy position, but I want you to, to have a informed field on which you can provide direction. So size threshold, the preliminary recommendation and your peer cities have a smaller threshold is to apply only to multifamily residential and residential mixed use projects with 11 or more units. Okay? And the idea behind that is that developers, the state in its small lot housing legislation sets 10 units and below. They incentivize it with the idea that 10 units, subdivision of 10 units and smaller produces missing middle and quote unquote naturally occurring affordable housing. And naturally occurring affordable housing means lower costs, but not that deed restricted, available to only people earning 80% of area median income. So that, that's more of the colloquial understanding of what affordable housing means. Affordable to me, like less expensive, rather than being, meeting a legal threshold of who has the ability to access that housing based on their income. So issues to consider, people may choose to tier their projects into 10 unit chunks, right? To avoid having to comply with the IHO. Exempting small or single family projects could also limit housing in lower density, which tend to be high opportunity areas of the city, although most of Arinda is a very high opportunity area in the TCAC system, right? So it's already, that may be less of an issue. And again, MTC TOC policy is relatively new and it's evolving, right? It says a little bit of ambiguity as to whether or not, it applies to newly constructed residential or mixed use projects, but it's ambiguous as to whether it applies to single family detached. Probably more clarity will come shortly. If I were a betting man, which I'm not, particularly when it comes to something like the MTC, they will interpret it as requiring it for single family as well.
Ask a question around the, for a single family detached projects with 11 or more units, that means what in practice?
Will you round?
Division with 11 single family homes?
Yeah, a subdivision with 11 single family homes.
Thank you.
Income levels. So the modeling that we undertook was based on 80% of AMI. And so, just check something here. But that, our work was done on the basis of an 80% AMI assumption. And I just wanted to double check that. So other issues to consider with looking at income levels. Tracking income levels is a compliance issue which increased demands on city staff. Generally speaking, most cities contract with a third party housing nonprofit to administer these programs. If you're a bigger city, like we work in Long Beach, it's bigger than Oakland, they have their own housing department that could administer it. But firstly, like Arinda, you're most likely to find yourself contracting out. Having varying levels of affordability can be complex to implement, but you may want to allow applicants to adjust the mix. And you know, there's a formula, you could say one. And, you know, there's a formula, you could say, one unit at eighty percent, if you wanted to provide them at one hundred and twenty percent, you'd have to provide a unit and a half, right? That's how the math would work out, for example. And then down the chain, fewer units as you, it would be a sixth of a unit for the very low-income and thirty percent of a unit for the acutely low. So you could arrange it however you're comfortable with, what you want to incentivize, but the modeling was done at an eighty percent of AMI. Another question is to ownership versus rental. Again, the recommendation would be to apply the IHO to both rental and for-sale developments. Again, to consider, do you want to try and incentivize one kind of tenure over another? That's a community question. And again, with that, changes to development standards on the for-sale side, some for-sale projects, particularly in the downtown, may become infeasible with a fifteen percent requirement on for-sale units. Talking about in-Lu fee, so the in-Lu fee, this is an eye-popping number, and we'll talk a little bit about how, this is the maximum. So because of Prop 218, you can't, the state, you can't make money on these things. It has to be tied to the demonstrated gap, right, between what a family of four with that eighty percent of area median income could afford, the capitalized value of their rent stream versus what the market rate is providing. So the rate here would be about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per affordable unit. That's the maximum, right, that you could impose. This equates to about seventy dollars, sixty-nine dollars per net rentable or saleable square foot, again, based on a fifteen percent affordable requirement. Number would change if you changed the requirement of affordability. So that's per, so it'd be per affordable unit, would come down to sixty-nine dollars per net residential rentable or saleable square foot in the building. That's about four times what your neighbors charge, but that's the maximum. So it's much higher than in comparable jurisdictions. Now, you want, you have to have some kind of alternate compliance. Usually in-Lu fees are the most popular, but you could require off-site production of the units, you could require land dedication, there are other things that you can do, but for the rental units, not for the for-sale, but for the rental units, you do need to have a opportunity for alternative compliance. So you want to balance this. If the fees are too low, then the developer, the applicant just fees out. It's too high, it can affect feasibility. And there's also reasons why you might want to build up a housing development trust fund. So you might want people to pay the fee in Lu, particularly, for example, if you have a piece of public land that you want to enter into a development partnership with a nonprofit housing developer and get a hundred percent affordable project, right? So there are reasons, or maybe one of some communities develop programs where they take this and they do direct rental support. So there's all kinds of reasons why you might want an applicant to choose to fee out. And so how you balance that, I just, we just wanted to give you the maximum, right, with, to make sure you didn't go past that, because you can get in trouble if you do. Now, one thing to keep in mind, the MTC TOC policy requires a net value of a hundred thousand dollars per unit when you fee out. So again, that's another consideration when thinking about setting it.
That's a maximum they're requiring?
No, minimum. That's a minimum that they're requiring. Another recommendation, sorry.
It would be really crystal clear, if we were to be compliant with the MTC TOC policy, an in-Lu would be set at a hundred thousand per unit or more?
Yes.
Okay, they don't set a square footage?
No, they do it per unit, and that's why we initially did it per unit. And then there was confusion because all your other peer communities do it by square footage. Personally, I think it's easier to think about them in terms of units, but we wanted to have a even comparison for you all to consider.
You gave us sixty-nine dollars per square foot as comparable with the maximum that could be charged per unit.
Right.
What is, just for reference point, right, what? Because that's-
About a quarter of that.
Okay.
About a quarter of that.
Sure.
Because, you know, we have to make assumption about unit size. I think our unit size average is like twelve hundred square feet, because we're looking at like two bedrooms, those kinds of things.
Right, which is more consistent with other jurisdictions.
It's still higher than some of the other jurisdictions. So now remember, when you're entering jurisdictions, one, they have ordinances that predate both the MTC TOC policy, they might not have transit facilities, they also may predate AB-1505. So there are other pieces to to consider in that regard. So other issues to consider, oh, go ahead, please, sorry.
Is the city, how do you spend in-Lu fees?
There are certain limitations, but typically you can spend them on affordable housing programs as well as on actual affordable housing projects, so.
So one of the other things that the, the housing element requires the ordinance to address is how to administer affordability control, I really strongly encourage you, this is an advocacy position, to find a qualified third-party partner to administer this. You don't want your staff doing this. I actually, I told this story at Planning Commission. I'm a former planning director for a small city, and years ago, they had a historic program, a low-income historic program, and they, they wanted to have the commission, their historic resources, cultural affairs committee, administrate, and they had families come with their taxes and make a presentation as to why they would be good neighbors and stewards of their, you do not want to do that. That was one of the ugliest things I've ever seen in local government. Yeah, go ahead.
To that, and what are affordability controls? I think I just understood from what the example you gave, but-
Right, so if you want to have a renter, somebody needs to check the taxes to make sure that their income falls within the appropriate category. And there are nonprofit agencies that maintain lists of qualified households, and their interest is to get them into these units. It's, there's more to it than that, clearly.
Clearly, that's what I needed to-
Yeah, but you know, it gets very technical in a hurry, and you don't want to be in a position of deciding who's worthy and who isn't, right? You just don't. But there's costs associated with that, so that's something to consider, right? Not to say there aren't costs to having it done internally as well, but they're more hard-burned costs. Okay, additional areas that we want to consider again that are required, period of affordability, this is traditional, that the rental units are deed-restricted, so covenants placed on the deed, registered with the county for fifty-five years, and the ownership units are deed-restricted for forty-five years. There's some interesting issues on there about what happens to capital appreciation, but the only people who can purchase them are, they're going to remain affordable at that income level for forty-five years. Relationship to other state incentives, recommendation is to count units that are produced accessing other statewide programs, significantly including density bonus, as units that count towards the affordability requirement. And here's the thing to think about, right? If you are accessing the state density bonus, you are committing to produce the units. So that, you don't want to double count that IHO requirement. And you can also consider alternative compliance options to the in-Lu fee. Sometimes communities do that on the basis of like allowing you to enter into development agreement, so like maybe you produce something off-site, or land dedication, or something along those lines. So those are all issues that you can consider beyond the in-Lu fee, but the in-Lu fee is the most common and easiest to administer. Yes?
Okay, yeah. I don't understand the question or issue you just raised of double counting.
So in other words, you could, you could choose-
It's not like apples and oranges?
No, because if I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to access the density bonus, I get thirty-five percent density bonus. I have to, unless I'm a senior project, a hundred percent senior, right, I have to produce, and I think certain student housing projects now too, I have to produce fifteen percent affordable units. So I have to produce the units, it's, I can't fee out, I can't take the density bonus and fee out, right? So effectively having a local fifteen percent on top of the density bonus fifteen percent would create a thirty percent, which would be seen as a constraint on housing production. One thing to keep in mind about this fifteen percent number, and this is important, is that HCD reserves the right to review any city that goes above fifteen percent. So in the past, our firm has worked in cities in Marin County, for example, where early on, this was seen as a way to kind of be a backdoor housing moratorium. Because if you said, we'll set our, community A says, we'll set our affordability requirement at twenty percent, community B says, well, we're more virtuous, we'll set it at twenty-five percent. And of course, as the net result of making any housing production infeasible, HCD is on to that. And they will see it as a constraint, and you'll get first the nasty gram and then enforcement effort. So I would strongly recommend that you not go above that as a threshold practically, right? That'll create problems for you down the road. Design and building requirements, this is a fair housing thing. The ordinance should require that all affordable units are constructed to comparable standards, they're visually indistinguishable and functionally indistinguishable. That's a fair housing thing, you really don't have a lot of choice on that. Sure.
So the affordable projects, would they have to be the same standard?
No, no. Right, that would be a different project. So they'd fee out, they'd meet their obligation, no units are constructed, so no units have to be at the same standard.
Can I-
Sure, please.
If you're asking-
Please.
Just because this was, I was going to wait till later, but what are, like, off-site affordable housing production? How does that work? Is that also in Arinda then? And does it count as your arena? I mean, how-
Okay, if it's not in, if it's not in Arinda, it doesn't account for your, for your arena.
So that's, what does off-site mean?
Well, it could be another-
In practice.
It could be another parcel of land, could be on a parcel of land that the, that the project developer owns, or has a partnership with somebody. It's not super common, but it does happen. As far as doing it extraterritorially, that might be a question for the city attorney. I know back in the old redevelopment era, which is, shows you how old I am, and how long I've been doing this, you could fund projects outside of your jurisdiction if you made a substantial finding that there were no viable sites within your jurisdiction. So it was really interesting, you had, you'd build up the twenty percent housing set aside, and communities would then be able to spend it in neighboring communities by finding that there were no viable sites.
I'm suggesting that we wouldn't want to, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, so that, so, so that's, so you may want to preserve that option for flexibility of off-site production or land dedication, but in practicality, the in-Lu fee is the simplest to administer, and the one that's going to get you the most likely to be compliant once it's analyzed, certainly with the MTC TOC policy, which is explicit about the hundred thousand dollars per unit.
I just didn't understand it, thank you.
Yeah, no, 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 this is confusing, complex stuff. It really is, and that's why I wanted to put that other information about the background for the broader community that's, that's listening in. So this also dovetails with this question of the timing of affordable construction. Again, generally, the units should be completed at the same time as the market rate units and before a certificate of occupancy is issued, or if there's an alternative compliance method, that that is met before a CVO is issued, that's typical. And then in terms of incentives, the recommendation would be to continue to exempt affordable units from city impact fees, as they currently are. So that's an existing program, and you might, might have problems if you went back on that. Okay, so as staff has said, this is your, this is staff recommendations, and this isn't from the consultant, right, which is to provide guns on preliminary economic feasibility and market study recommendations, to prepare a recommendations memo, which incorporates your feedback, the feedback we hear at this study session, the feedback we heard from the planning commission, and any other public comment that we received through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I make a couple of statements about it? So that was a lot to digest, and I know that the council has previously discussed this, so I don't think a lot of the issues are new to the council. I would suggest, in your discussion, after you ask your clarifying questions, if you were to focus on kind of the bigger ticket items in this, which are the percent allocation and the, you know, the in-Lu fee amounts and the applicability. And I will say, and I had this discussion when we talked on the, as part of the prep for reviewing the drafts, this is not, I mean, we're basically taking a snapshot and saying this particular assumptions were made on this project. In reality, and I'm sure we might hear from speakers in this room, that we'll talk about the reality of it, that every project is different and every project's feasibility is based around land values that we determine in this assumption to be residual, but in reality, we know that people have expectations of value for their property that might be inconsistent with residual land values. So I say all that in the context of, if you want to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance and you want to build in enough flexibility so that you could be responsive to making sure that you're looking at projects on a project-by-project basis, you can do that in a way through the development of that ordinance so that you could encourage development as opposed to having this potentially be an impediment to development in the future. So I just sort of wanted to lay out some of those foundational thoughts that I've had about it. And you also, I think, should give us some feedback on whether in establishing an in-Lu fee, really what the policy objective would be for that. Because I've had a lot of experience in my other community in doing these inclusionary housing, and in that case, there was a lot of emphasis placed on wanting to collect the fee because wanting to work with nonprofit housing developers to build that level of affordability and knowing that the in-Lu fee money that you collect gets layered in with other financing and other support to build more affordable housing than what you might otherwise get in an individual project. So I just leave that with you as part of some background that I've had in this topic, and, and I think nothing that I've said is inconsistent with what's being proposed. But I think just kind of, I know we're, we have a very limited amount of time, and I hate to say it, but we're probably going to go over the ten o'clock time because we do have some other required items after this.
Definitely are going over the ten o'clock time. Sorry. I think we're gonna, okay. Okay, questions to start? Councilmember G.
My question is, not the percent, but can you designate that the inclusionary housing has to be a certain size, like it has to be a two-bedroom, or it has to, so that it's not all studios or? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I think the consultant knows the answer.
Yeah, they have to be proportionate to the market rate units, right? So you can't, if you're building all two-bedrooms, you can't make all the affordable units studios. That goes back to the end, functionally indistinguishable requirement, and that's a, that's a fair housing requirement.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Hoxsey.
I had a question about the percentage. I understand we can't go over fifteen percent, but our neighboring communities seem to be as low as ten percent, and so I'm just trying to understand why we would either have fifteen percent, or ten percent, or five percent- And so I'm just trying to understand why we would either have 15% or 10% or 5%. I just, other, maybe it's all about the MTCTOC policy, but I'm not 100% sure.
No, I guess the presentation is done. But I was going to put the Christine's suggestion to put the neighboring cities table up. But yeah, it's, but you're precisely right. The MTCTOC policy and sort of where the state is trying to push people. At 15% seems to be a number that you shouldn't exceed, but you'd have to justify why you'd want to go below.
It seems to be also creating some projects that would clearly not be feasible at 15%.
Particularly in your downtown with the, with the parking requirements.
Right.
Can I interrupt on the parking requirement, just to clarify? So state law now prohibits us from requiring parking within a half mile. So I want to be careful, we're not saying tonight that we are requiring parking within a half mile of park.
So in fact, the model assumes a lower rate of parking than the code. So it's more reflecting the market, what we heard from the, the focus groups. It said, really, we can't park them much more below one space per DU. But in fact, the city attorney is absolutely right. Within the high quality transportation area, the city may not use its zoning code to impose an off-street parking requirement. So they could conceptually be zero parked, although again, you can model any possible contingency. We sort of said, well, what, what's a realistic project going to look like?
So you're saying they wouldn't sell if they, if.
Or rent, yeah, it's difficult.
Because people still will have a car.
Yeah.
And does, I, I'm trying to understand, I, I know you said that it, it should apply to both for sale and rental units, but is it MTC policy that keeps us from separating those two categories? Because it seems like the 15% affects the feasibility of for sale units at a much higher rate than it does rental units.
Yeah, for two reasons. One, the gap between affordability for for sale projects and those incomes is greater than it is for rent, and that's why people with more modest incomes tend to rent. But also, the single family in that circumstance, it's an artifact of the large lot size requirement.
Okay, Vice Mayor. A few times you guys have mentioned the planning commission's inputs. Could you just tell us a little bit more about some of their feedback that you got in that session?
I believe there's a memorandum, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the feedback, some, some of it was they had not had those previous discussions. So they were super getting into the detail and were asking, you know, very basic questions about like, I'm trying to understand all the parameters and how they mix. And they were very uncertain about how to mix them. Because they said, oh, well, these, you know, there are all these toggles and we're not sure what the best set of toggles will, will, you know, or how it will result. They did ask the question about, is it required? That's why we added the slide saying that it is, it's in the contract with HCD, but there are a variety of things you have to implement. So it's one of the things that it was identified by staff as a low hanging fruit. So, so I think that was, I think those were the major concerns. Anything else that?
Yeah, and again, just having more information and context to make sure that you had about what the neighboring communities were doing.
Yeah, so the slide was, was added to the presentation specifically so you could see those, those numerical variables.
Was there any sort of consensus or recommendation? Or were they having more of a study session themselves?
They were having a study session as well.
Can I ask a, a follow-up to the, because it goes to the percentage? Are we seeing, or are you seeing trends of any other jurisdictions looking to amend their inclusionary ordinances? And in particular, the percentage or the pieces that, to be compliant with TOC policy?
Within, yeah, so there's, there's two pieces here. There's TOC policy and for jurisdictions that are impacted by it, yes. We are seeing a trend of communities trying to comply with MTC's TOC policy because MTC is pretty clear that that's going to be a requirement for the One Bay Area grants in cycle four.
Right, so what I'm wondering is if we look at this chart, inclusionary percent, is this going to look different for?
Yeah, and it may, people are going to amend their order. Another issue too, that's kind of interesting, was the project manager on 16, six-cycle housing elements, starting in the Sacramento area, finishing up here actually in current, actually in Kern County, were the latest ones that we worked on. And it was interesting to see how HCD's requirement got more emphatic about adoption and adoption at certain targets the later you were in the cycle. So it didn't appear in the early, early in the cycle. And then once HCD latched on to housing mobility in AFFH, that became kind of the lever that they used to then, later in the cycle, require communities to adopt and require at certain percentages. So this to me feels kind of like a, a mid to late level adoption. And as you got later and later in the process, HCD was requiring an adoption at 15%. You have to realize that it, it, each analysis had to go through, you know, the, the state requirements and their interpretation of the regulations changed as they went deeper in their cycle.
Sure. Vice Mayor.
I wasn't aware that HCD has, this is for you, that they had blundered onto this idea that, that these sorts of laws create more income ability. What I'd always heard is that because in for sale, people who are in the BMR units aren't accumulating, they're not accruing any wealth other than what they pay down on their mortgage. They're, and then renters are sort of stuck, right? You get in when you're 28 or 25 and then you can't ever move and then that unit's locked up. So I always thought that they were an anti-mobility thing. And it sounds like I'm wrong about the latest thinking, can you help?
They define mobility a little bit differently. You're talking about filtering of housing. They're talking about the mobility of households in lower socioeconomic status from TCAC zones to be able to move into higher socioeconomic status. So that's their definition of mobility. That was an important part of the AFFH findings. So as the AFFH findings, you have to remember, they were promulgated while SCAG was a, was, I think 120 days before the deadline was when the AFFH requirements were promulgated. And as late as March of 2023, they were still issuing guidance on AFFH. You were probably already certified by then, or very close to it. So it's been a moving target and that's the origin of a lot of this. I can tell you HCD worst stories, but you don't want to hear.
We answered the question, geographic mobility, not income ability. Market mobility, not, yeah.
Okay, so any other questions? Okay, we have some public comment on this item. Thank you. First, Brian Griggs.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, my name's Brian Griggs and I could probably talk for 30 minutes, but I'll try and jam into three minutes. My partner Jeff Stone and I, our local developers, were based in Lafayette. We've got several projects going in Lafayette, Danville. We've got projects in Mountain View. We've got one project in Lafayette under construction, another one was entitled. We're going to do 90 units right at the top of Oak Hill Road. So our interest is trying to convey to you, from a developer's perspective, kind of the inclusionary housing benefits, the constraints, and try and encourage you to, to look very deep into this. Because inclusionary housing is something we totally support. We think you should definitely adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance. I think how you do it, you don't want to stifle housing. As was said earlier, I think the purpose of this meeting is not necessarily for more inclusionary housing, but try and figure out how you can balance the inclusionary housing versus actually getting projects built. Because you're probably aware, there's projects in Lafayette that were entitled that were not built. Entitlements have elapsed, this happened pretty much throughout Northern California. And that's really driven by construction costs, by land cost. I think the city manager pointed out, trying to get someone who thinks their land five years ago was worth X and now it's worth 75% of X, it's tough to, to make things move forward. We're going to be bringing a project in front of you in the next, hopefully in the next three to four weeks. Hopefully have a study session in, you know, in the not-too-distant future for a project on El Torinda, which we're excited to bring forward. We are going to have an affordable unit in it voluntarily, even though you don't have it. The purpose behind that is state density bonus laws because there are certain elements that a lot of people leverage to try and get bigger buildings, buildings that don't look good. And you're going to find out that your hands are tied in many ways. But that's not, we're local, I live in Lafayette, been there for 42 years, been driving up Camino Sabrante for 35 years and have been very anxious to do a project in Arinda. Jeff lives in Maraga, he's raised his family there, I raised my kids here. And I think our interest is not the project that we've already put forth, are going to put forth. It's more projects. I think Arinda could really use housing. I think there's a perception that it's, you know, not developer friendly. I think you don't have a lot of sites for housing. So you've got to figure out how you can balance the ability to underwrite a project. You can get it entitled, you, you got to finance it. You got to be able to borrow the money, you got to build it, and you got to settle it affordably. Because things, you know, there are caps, there are limits. And so I think the, the report is a good start. I think the reality is that some of the underwriting, and Jeff's going to talk a little bit about that, might be pretty aggressive, it may not be focused on the sub-market we're in here. And I think that's what you really have to focus on is this is not the Tri-Valley, it's not Bakersfield, it's not other places. And some of these percentages and these numbers are really going to be constraints if you don't carefully look at it. So, thank you, happy to ask, answer questions if you'd like.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming and talking to us. Jeff Stone.
Hey, good evening, thank you for allowing me to make a public comment on your inclusionary housing ordinance. I am the developer that's being sued at 1600 School Street in Maraga. City of Maraga is being sued, I'm putting 66 apartments there. I use state density bonus law and a few attorneys that lived on the street is now suing it under a CEQA violation. The reason is, is because how tall it got. The reason it got tall is because I had to place inclusionary housing inside of it. I have 150 units being built in Danville and entitled that senior housing because I believe that people should be able to downsize into appropriate places near their communities, near their grandchildren and not be pushed out of state. I have a project with Brian's coming to 23 El Torinda. I have 150 units in Lafayette in different phases. Lucas Ranch in Lafayette, I have Sunnyside that was on your consent calendar and, and earlier. I might be your most active developer in the East Bay. And on top of that, I have about 6,000 units of type one high-rise between Seattle and San Jose. What I saw tonight was very academic and it was done well. And I think the consultant staff and everyone in there is trying to pave a path of intent to try to figure out how to make an IHO work, which is important because we have an affordability crisis. It's now how do we direct and how do we address it in our individual part as these communities so that we're helping, not then inhibiting the growth that needs to occur. I have a minute 30, so I'll just get direct to the issue. Everything that's being laid out, because of the complexity of it, to vote on something this quickly is, is very hard, especially with housing element updates moving as fast as they are. AB 130 that just passed is a straight example of what's going to happen to local land use controls. And if you, if we think that we are going to continue to control how we're going to build housing, the state is going to continue to erode that. My biggest problem on this, and to my fault, I was asked to join one of these focus groups, is all the cost assumptions are dead wrong in this exercise. $237 a construction cost foot to build. I'm building every one of my projects that's podium for over $450 a foot. I'll show you my underwriting. Single-family residential, $176 a foot. We've been building this community for 40 years. I can't build a house for under $700 a foot now here. $176 is what you're going to make your ultimate decision based off of the feasibility of an inclusionary housing ordinance, based off of data that's not supported by what we actually build for. So it, it literally undermines all of the actual key takeaways from what you're going to decide on. So the biggest thing that I suggest for you is to take your time in the process so that you understand the key assumptions that go into these underwriting models. Because the other, yield on cost, 9%? Sorry.
You can finish your sentence, go ahead.
There's not a single project that I've seen in California under a six yield on cost in the Bay Area since doing this for 20 years. One, I've never seen one. And if the, if you could build something to a 6% yield on cost and sell it at a 4.5% cap rate, you're capturing that 1.5% value. To put a slide up and to suggest that you can hit a 9% yield on cost would mean that this entire city, I would come out of this office today, I would look left and right and see project after project. I, I urge you to be very careful in how you're approaching this issue because bad assumptions and bad academic details could prohibit this and then you'd lose all local land use control.
Thank you, thank you for speaking to us. I want to make a motion before we go any further to extend our meeting to, I'm just going to move that we extend our meeting to 11 because we have a lot of agenda items left that need to be heard tonight.
I like short deadlines and then we inch it forward and you keep.
Okay, 10:30, I'll amend it 10:30. Is that a second on 10:30? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay. Any more public comment on item H1? Hearing none, I will close public comment, thank you for the public comment, and bring it back for discussion. And I think what we're looking to do is give big picture feedback, correct? Be correct. Okay. Who wants to go first? Other ways.
How about the person who knows the least about it?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm probably up there with you, I'm happy to also dive in.
I guess my big picture comments, I appreciate everything. I really appreciate you guys coming tonight, even though I wish I had more ability to understand some of what you shared with us. But I do appreciate very much that you are here to share it with us and hopefully you will share more with us. I, I guess I would say in the big picture, I would be looking for something that keeps us in the zone of the straight and narrow with HCD because I think we've had enough issues with them already that we don't want to, you know, we don't want to cross that. I think we're trying generally to be somewhat compliant with the MTC policy, at least again, not trying to flaunt that we're trying to get way far out of it. And then the other thing I would recommend, or my, my vote would be for is to put as much flexibility into it as we can so that we can look at it more project by project and have reasons that we can do that. So I, I mean, I like all of those ideas, those would be some of my comments.
I agree with everything she said and I really like the idea of building in a broad exception to help us deal with things on a case-by-case basis. Because when I, maybe one of us is an expert up here, but the rest of us are still have something to learn. I'm clearly not an expert and the newest to all of this, but I was thinking, as we were hearing the presentation, that the building costs seemed very low to me. I'm not a builder and I was very concerned about sort of just impacting the feasibility of building anything. I, I, I think that we have to figure out how to have a balance in Arinda between, you know, having standards that are just so high that we have no building and then having standards that, you know, we just have all of a sudden, you know, wall-to-wall building. So we have to, we have to figure out how to have the middle ground. And I like the idea of flexibility and having the ability to have a review on a more case-by-case basis, if that's something we can build in.
I mean, okay, I, I don't really understand the case-by-case basis because the inclusionary housing ordinance, if we're going to develop one, which I think we should, applies. But I think where we get more flexibility is by some of these choices we're asked to make within the ordinance, to the extent I understand it, yes.
Could I just make one statement on that? You could build in an exception or the ability to waive your requirement for a project if it's, if they can demonstrate that the feasibility is in question if you apply the standards.
Okay, so one of my questions would be, I would be all in favor of that? So one of my questions would be, I would be all in favor of that, provided it is still, I do want to develop an inclusionary ordinance, and I also want it to be compliant with MTC TOC guidelines. I was surprised with some of the requirements from TOC guidelines, because they're sort of out of sync with our jurisdictions. And that is making me wonder if those neighboring jurisdictions are going to change, or if, or if the MTC TOC guidelines, since they're still sort of being developed, might change as well. I, were it not for the TOC guidelines, would favor closer to a 10% than 15%, but I'd be willing to go to 15 for the, to be compliant. The 11 units, on the other hand, is higher than a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions, and that might favor development, right? But I would be agreeable to that. I thought most of the recommendations were, made sense in terms of what came out of the consultant report, the final sort of pages in the report. The one that I felt like I needed a lot more information on was the in-loof fee calculation. I support, I think I favor an in-loof fee, from what I know about it. Again, I'm still learning. This study session was appropriate, helpful. But the number seemed, you know, somewhere between the, somewhere between, you know, $100,000 per unit and the maximum. It's a really large range. And I was having trouble figuring it out until you gave us the $69 square foot, because I was, wanted to know what it was square foot, so I could compare it. And it seems like the maximum would be way higher than other jurisdictions, and I would worry about that. On the other hand, those fees can be really useful in promoting housing in other ways. Things like exemptions for, you know, density bonus, so we're not double counting. That all seems to make a lot of sense to me, so. And then I don't know, really, I don't know. I'm trying to think, for a single-family home division, that didn't make, I would need more information on why it made sense to apply it to that.
And then, right now, it doesn't.
Yeah.
We would argue that there's not a feasibility test there that we could stand behind and say that that could work.
Right. Because to me, the policy goal is, yes, we want more affordable housing. We need to have a housing crisis. But, you know, to have, we want a goal that is not going to impede actual building of housing, which is what we really need in Arinda, so.
I guess in relation to the in-loof fee, I think this would be a really good direction to try and get tonight, because we would like to come back with a recommendation is, do you want to set a fee to encourage, to kind of strike the balance by setting it so that it would encourage people to look towards the in-loof fee as an alternative for construction? If so, you probably should make it attractive. At 540, it's not attractive. And so, you know, you could, is there a desire from the city council to collect fees so that we can put that towards affordable programs? And to also support nonprofit housing development that could occur in this community? Which would, typically, when you collect a fee, for example, let's say your fee was $300,000. You, the alternative is the developer builds the unit or pays $300,000. If you collect a $300,000 fee, and you work with a nonprofit housing developer who's putting together a project, you typically, in my experience, has been that they look to the city to put in about $150,000 per unit. So you can create potentially two units with that same $300,000 if it's placed into, you know, a project, like an Eden project or something like that, that you guys are familiar with, because we have one here. But stacking that funding is incredibly important, and getting those commitments from the city are important. And you can basically leverage and get more units built with the in-loof fee, even if it's set at a lower rate than what you would otherwise charge at a maximum.
That makes a lot of sense to me, but I'm also very much learning.
My biggest question with that would be, are we a community that could possibly amass enough money to make it at all worthwhile? I almost find myself thinking it would be better to have the actual units, because I just, I don't know, between the sort of dearth of available property, period, and owners that may not want to part with property that they, you know, they are going to not give up.
That would be interesting to know.
And I would, I mean, love to hear from our vice mayor, who has, who is not...
Who may be the one.
Who has some knowledge in this area.
I'm going to try to speak quickly and succinctly, because most people in this room have heard the soapbox version of this. But, you know, things like, I hear you talk about calculating the in-loof fees that we could get based on the, all the units in the housing element. And I agree with Councilmember G that I think we'd be lucky to get a few good projects. That's what I would like to see. I would like to see a few good projects. And when we sit here talking about that, for example, and do we want to encourage the fee payment or other ways that they can comply? Arinda's not big enough to have off-site land that they can buy and contribute, or off-site affordable housing projects. Those are more urban solutions, and they don't really apply. So the fee is kind of what we've got. And I just don't think we're going to have. I mean, Wilder did an in-loof fee. That paid for some projects that we got and were wonderful projects. But how many more Wilders do we have? So, those are the right questions to ask. Just as a starting point, I thought this process was terrific. I mean, the background, the presentation, the way you have made it very clear that we're not, you know, running into a forced solution. I really appreciate that, because I felt a little railroaded with the process, where the question you ask is, well, how do we develop a good affordable housing ordinance? When the initial question was, do we want to proceed with our evaluation and analysis? And next thing you know, this becomes a recommendation memo, and that memo becomes an ordinance. And then we have a fully drafted ordinance, and when do we get to holler stop? And I know that the first time this was presented, the other four council members wanted to keep analyzing and studying. But I want to remind everybody, we can still holler stop if we feel that the state laws that are coming at us really fast and are all incentives-based, right? They're not about city laws adding, piling on to these state laws with more requirements. They're incentives, right? It says if you're willing to do affordable housing, you get waivers, you get concessions, you get height. All of those waivers and concessions the state is giving for building affordable housing, don't mean to turn my back to you, are coming at the city's cost, right? They're waiving our fees. They're waiving our height limits. They're waiving our design requirements. And so, why would we want to force any project that might come forward to be a density bonus project? I'm not sure that there's much to be gained by doing this. I think our objectives are to get projects to turn over, to get housing built. And I, as you know, personally believe, you saw the housing crisis with building housing, right? That'll turn over some of our older housing stock that was built in the 50s and 60s for other people to renovate and move in. I don't think we have to solve all the affordability with the newest construction. And so, I know these laws are trendy. I know everybody's doing them. But I don't think an inclusionary ordinance right now is the best fit for Arinda's objectives. And if you look at what the consultant was asked, is how to get a good affordable housing ordinance, but not, it's up to us to decide whether we are ready right now to have a drafted ordinance in front of us to act on. I personally am not. The other thing, you know, we've talked about this question of, where we could have what I call the feasibility out, which is, we could always waive it if somebody can show that their project is infeasible. But I would remind you that when we had the 10-units-to-an-acre zoning all this time, we've never had a project come through and ask us for a waiver. They've never said, here's my application, I'm looking for a waiver to do this project. They don't have any confidence that Arinda is development-friendly enough to give those waivers. I mean, you still have to come in with an application-ready project. And so, well, I really think it's a great idea. And if we do one, we should have that. But I don't think we should assume that people will bring us infeasible projects and hope that we waive the ordinance. So I just wouldn't want to put everything on that. And with that, I'll, I have one more point that's important. And that is to remember, when you talk to people about the development feasibility, they're just talking about the construction loan, the construction equity, how to make a feasible project that has a cap rate that you could sell on. But remember, I mean, I, in my day job, operate a lot of buildings that were built with density bonus BMR units. And remember that for, you know, years 10 and 15 and 20, it's the other renters that are subsidizing that 15%, right? The developer's long gone. It's owned by somebody who bought it whatever. They're going to be charging rent to the other 85% to support those loss leader 15%. So, is that the best way to get? I mean, yeah, it makes housing more affordable for that 15%, but it also makes it more expensive for other renters. So I don't love these laws. I just think we should let more housing get built, however that shows up. And I think the state is doing cartwheels to make sure that the affordable is included. So, those are my thoughts.
Hey, I have a question. I have two questions for you. The first question I have is, how does your thoughts gel with what HCD wants to see?
Well, I think what HCD wants to see is a very high number of affordable units get built in Arinda. But I think we're going to be more successful in having all affordable projects come forward, like Eden, like Montevista, is it Monteverde?
Monteverde.
Thank you. Because right now, if you look at all the bonds coming in forward in the next year or two, you look at all of the agencies that are funding affordable housing right now as part of the whole state crisis. It's actually easier to build all affordable than to build market rate right now. And so, I, I don't know if we're going to succeed in hitting our numbers in affordable, but I don't think we're going to hit our numbers in market rate either. And so, I would rather do the right thing to get a few good quality projects. And I will bet, probably all of them do come forward with a density bonus, because they want the waivers and concessions. Maybe one or two infill projects won't. But let's let the market decide. Let's not add our own law to make housing harder, when it's already pretty hard.
I mean, I have one other thought. And I apologize to the developers that were nice enough to be here, because this is not, this is not quote, well, it is very much real life, but it's not real life in terms of what you guys do. And that is, the other thing that has always worried me is, if we don't do this, to me, it looks like, oh, Arinda, fairly rich community, doesn't want any of this when all of our neighbors and all these other surrounding communities. And I just feel like, that just makes us a bigger target for the YIMBY world, trying to come after us. And I, I don't want to be in that position either.
And my only answer on that is, A, I don't believe that a transit agency should set our values and priorities for us. And B, HCD is the one who says you can't require inclusionary housing above certain targets. Because, as the consultant told us, other jurisdictions that were considered exclusive, high-income, used these ordinances to block development by making it expensive. So if you look back at our housing element, it says anything above, what, 20%? Has to come in for their consent. So what they want us to have is our RINAM numbers with our affordable targets. They don't care if we have an inclusionary housing ordinance.
I do appreciate all that, and that's, no, I mean, I, on a practical level, the piece about having, you know, maybe what works here the best is some of these all affordable projects, right, that we've been able to, and I, I, you know, it's a different economy, and I, that resonated. On the other hand, it is really important to me that I don't want to lose MTC participation in funding, because I think we need it for other reasons in Arinda. And so, compliance with the TOC guidelines is a priority, and has changed my views on certain, some of these things. If you look back at like, where I was at when we looked at it in October, you know, I didn't want, I was, I think, advocating that it apply to, you know, smaller projects as well. I've, I'm in agreement with the 11 now. And the 15%, I think, you know, were not for the MTC guideline, I'd probably prefer 10.
Can we just clarify, the MTC guidelines, the TOC policy?
Yeah.
This is one of the potential policies we could pick. There are others we could pick now.
There are, but we looked at them, and they're not great. They're not really meant for us.
Not great.
A lot of them are just hard.
I'm just saying that there are alternatives. It's not, you have to do this or not. But there are alternatives, they're just not very good alternatives.
I feel like, well, I remember when we went through this. This was like, one that was, it wasn't even, I mean, I think you used the term low-hanging fruit, but I'm thinking possible. It's not even low-hanging fruit, it's just possible. So many of those TOC guidelines, I think, are just, they're, they don't work. We just don't have the resources. We can't, we can't spend $1 million on a program for renters here. I mean, we just don't have that budget.
Renters.
Right. We don't even have enough rental units, right? So, and we want, we genuinely, you know, to the developers in the, you know, world, Arinda is open for business, and that we really would like to see, you know, more development here, I think. I speak for myself only, but, you know, but we want to do it in a sustainable, responsible way, right? So, that's my feedback. I would like to see us develop a, personally, an ordinance. I know we're short on time. Maybe, in the interest of seeing big picture, everyone could just sort of say whether they want an ordinance or not. And if so, maybe comment on the factors in the staff memo. I've already given my opinion on those. But, like, the percentage, the number of units, just, I don't know, if that's a good way to do it, and then I think we have to move on. If you have feedback on any of those factors. I was going through to like, the packet, page 148. The recommendations are also in detail at the very back of the consultant report.
And maybe just to poll people on whether they want it first, just do that across, and then, and then, the, you know, parameters, second.
Can I just ask a clarification question? To be in sort of what we think will be compliance with the MTC TOC policy, we have to be at 15%?
That's correct.
If we were at 10%, we wouldn't be in compliance.
I think there, is there a feasibility? Do they have?
Yes, there is a feasibility. If you show that things are infeasible, they will accept a lower percent.
And how do you show that things are infeasible? I guess you have to look back at those numbers and whether those were realistic.
Yeah, the numbers presented in this analysis Yeah, the numbers presented in this analysis would be the basis for that.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have partial feasibility, so that's infeasible across the board. So, but you'd have to, you'd have to sit down and talk to, do the details.
Well, we could also create an exception to allow, or could, would it be compliant with the policy to have the ability to waive that requirement on, on a project if we could determine it was unfeasible?
I don't know.
We don't know. Maybe.
I, there's a, not to get into TOC policy discussion. There's an 85% compliance requirement and no one knows what that exactly means yet, so.
This is all coming back. Okay.
Too much of it on whether or not you want to comply totally with TOC. We could find other ways and we think we could probably make some arguments.
Moving us along, for the straw poll, I am a no to moving forward. And if you do a recommendation letter, I thought everything that was in the staff report was very thoughtful.
Remind me again what we lose out on if we don't comply with TOC policy? The opportunity to get money for what?
For transportation grants from federally, money coming from the federal government that gets passed through MTC and then gets reallocated to local jurisdictions.
And is that federal fund going to flow, continue to flow? I mean, do we really know that that's a reality? We're going to get federal funding for?
I think in the, O-BAG four funding is probably just good. Subsequent funding for transportation from federal government, I don't know. The question is really about whether or not MTC will use this as the basis for all determinations, not just for O-BAG funding, but for all funding. So whether or not it comes from the federal government or it comes from a local or regional effort or, you know.
So why can't we wait till we find out more about MTC policy?
There's nothing more to find out about MTC policy. They keep issuing their guidance and we have reported that. We're going to come back and report again. You are under no gun to make a decision about this ordinance, right? I mean, we, we've.
To reframe, I think the question should be, do you want to move forward with an inclusionary ordinance or not? And if so, I'm just saying the 15%. Like my view is 15 rather than 10 because of the MTC TOC policy. That doesn't have to be everyone's view. I'm just throwing out my, my perspective on it.
The only project I know of that actually has, like the Arinda Grove project had eight units that they built for teachers. It was a, a school district property and that was about 10%. And that was feasible, obviously, because they built it and they sold it. So just, you know, a little anecdotally, we know that that might be feasible. I, I somewhat concerned that 15% isn't feasible. Certainly not for the kind of projects I think we want. I certainly would love somewhere in Arinda to retire to. That was a lovely condo that I don't have to maintain my large home for. And that doesn't exist today and I would love it. I'd really like it where Fairs is so I could look at it at the golf course, but. That, that aside, I, I just think that getting the kinds of projects built in Arinda that people in Arinda want to live in is important to me. And I just, I, I don't currently understand enough to know how to make this policy work with that view or if it can. So. And I'm the newest one to all this, so I apologize.
Does anyone want to give other feedback? I want to make sure you're getting enough. I don't know if we've given enough.
Yeah, I, I think the question of whether you feel like you want to move forward with an ordinance is an essential question. And then any parameters, so the 15% you mentioned or other parameters that you have an opinion on, that would help us as well.
Well, I guess I have to say I want to move forward, not because I don't have deep respect for the vice mayor's knowledge, because I really do believe a lot of what you're saying. I just feel like it's a danger zone with the policy and political world not, not to keep moving forward, whether it's MTC or HCD or the world at large or the politics of comparison or whatever. I just feel like it sort of needs to be a component of it. And hopefully it's a component that can be waived or modified or written in a way that we get things that we can make happen. But I feel like not having it at all, I personally feel just puts us in a strange zone relative to a lot of other communities.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Councilmember Riley, any opinions on moving forward or not moving forward? And if so, any parameter?
I am torn because of what Councilmember Iverson has had say about this. It doesn't seem like waiting is going to help if we want to, we're concerned about how this appears or how we appear. I don't want that image. So, and I think that's powerful. I mean, I want us to have an image of being supportive of affordable housing as well as friendly to businesses and be the place you want to build. So playing with all the numbers and building in a strong exception and communicating and selling and promoting that exception. So it's not buried, so people know that, that it's a friendly place and we've got a waiver available. And I guess if, when I look at it like that, I wish we all had more expertise about what these different numbers mean. But I feel like I'm ready to go forward, but I'm needing to massage and learn more about the different numbers. The, the number of units doesn't bother me, but that 15% is kind of needling me. And I don't, I heard there's some wiggle room with the 15%, but I don't appreciate. If, I mean, if we can go lower and then count on getting an exception or?
Yeah, no, that, you can, you have a range of 10, 15. You can even go lower than that, but it's, it's, it's being in compliance with MTC is that's where the 15 is coming from. And then.
But I thought I heard you could have exceptions to that.
Yeah, yeah, and you can, and you can have exceptions.
I wanted to know something that that means. That sounds too.
Yeah, no, I just.
Know what that means. If I can go with 12.
Yep.
With 11, something less than 15, how do you do it?
Okay.
How do we get into those exceptions?
Yep.
Um, okay. And so Councilmember Hoxsey, did you have any additional? You, you are in favor of moving forward or you're not? I'm sorry, it wasn't clear on that.
I'm not so clear either.
Okay.
To be quite honest, but I'm in favor of the conversation. And, and understanding it better. I'm concerned about the percentage. I don't think we want to be on the top of the Inluffy scale. I don't think we want to be at the bottom. I think we probably want to be somewhere in the middle. Okay, and that's all I understand at this point.
And I think we've given you all the feedback we're going to give.
We're not, we're not stopping at this point. We're going to continue to take the feedback and feedback. And we'll talk in, on our end about timing.
Yep.
And we'll also talk about whether or not we need another check in with you before we bring a draft ordinance forward.
Okay, agree. Okay, thank you.
And since it's 10:30, I'm going to make a motion to extend our meeting until 11:00. Second. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Hoxsey, just.
No, no, 15 minutes.
Okay, extend our meeting until 10:45. Okay, okay. Second on that, Councilmember Hoxsey? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That passes unanimously and that takes us, thank you, to item H2. Thank you. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, everybody.
To, which is correspondence from Mr. Warnoff regarding Brown Act and settlement of OC versus City Arinda litigation. And I think I will turn, we'll hear from our city manager and our city attorney.
Thank you very much. I'll be making the presentation for H2. I had about a page and a half of notes, but given how late the hour is, I've thought about how I can say less and still. Of course, you all received, and I'm sure you read, the detailed staff report.
Yes, thank you.
So, and in addition, I want to point out that you received some subsequent correspondence from Mr. Warnoff. It's labeled public forum on the handout here, but it's actually for H2, I believe, this item. So.
We did all get that and it's in the communications from.
Correct. So I'm going to skip basically over most of the facts, but please ask me questions if you want more detail at the end of this. And focus on saying a few words about settlements and the Brown Act. Brown Act, obviously being California's signature open meeting law. I think everybody in the room has even been to my training about the Brown Act. So you know how important this law is and how important it is to the city to comply. The Brown Act allows the city council to discuss litigation and authorize settlement terms in closed session. There is a case, Trancus, that I attached to the staff report that reaffirms this authority, but it also describes a narrow exception. That exception is that cities cannot, through a bilateral settlement agreement, circumvent an extrinsic public hearing requirement. In Trancus, the problematic settlement term was approval in closed session of a development project's zoning exemption. It's a sentence with a lot of words, but basically state law requires a public hearing for that kind of land use decision. So it's not a proper term for a settlement. The OC settlement, by contrast, is very different. Does not have that kind of settlement term in it and is not therefore problematic under the Trancus case, under the Trancus case. I looked and did not find any case extending Trancus to terms like those in the OC settlement. All right, so in addition to night, to tonight's item, which, H2, which is to allow the council the opportunity to review, discuss, provide direction if you'd like about the Brown Act correspondence, there are two more items on tonight's agenda. They are referenced in the settlement agreement, but they are also things that the council, of course, has authority to act on regardless of whether there was ever a settlement. H3 has to do with SSTOC bylaws and some proposed amendments. Item H4 is to consider a proposed agreement with Ladris for modeling. And there are the, the details and the wording and the funding source for the contractor before you. So in terms of process for item H2, which is item we're on right now, what I recommend is that you ask me any questions that you have, that you take public comment as you normally would, that you then close the public comment on this matter and then table this item. Go to the other two. If you'd like to take this back up again, either immediately following those items or at the future, you can do that. We are not, as I noted, seeking definitive counsel direction tonight on this item. It is primarily informational. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our city attorney on this item, H2? Okay, so. Do we, I know we, you, I will note for the record, yes, we have, we had some public comment from Mr. Warnoff and including one item that was listed under public forum that we all received and other public comment. Do we have any members of the public here who would like to speak on item H2? Okay, we have no speaker cards and seen no public comment. I will close public comment and bring this back in case there's any discussion on it or if not, we can table it. Any discussion?
I think we could, I could make a decision now as opposed to tabling it. I mean, that's an option, one way to proceed, right?
So if you, if you've heard all the update you need to receive and you don't need to receive anymore, then you can just move on from this.
That's what I would think we're ready to do.
That's fine, too.
Maybe not. I don't need to table it.
Okay, does anyone, would anyone like to table it? We can always come back to it and then close it then. I think I would prefer that. I would like to do that.
To table it or?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to move to table this item until later in.
All right, so that's a motion. You need a second.
Okay, so I will move to table item H2.
I will second that just so that we kind of do things in an order that's consider and then talk about the settlement. I think that sounds prudent.
Okay. All in favor of tabling item H2?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so unanimously, this item's tabled, we'll move to H3. I think the city manager is going to present.
Very quickly. Honorable mayor members of the council, this item is intended to codify certain activities undertaken by the Sales Tax Oversight Commission by amending their bylaws to provide clarity on their role with emergency evacuation planning, response and improvements. While the reason this item is on tonight's agenda is to satisfy the requirements of the settle agreement, staff believes that these additions to the bylaws are good public policy and are reflective of the existing ongoing efforts in working with the SSTOC. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one question, and that is just to ensure that the bylaw changes are in compliance with the original way that the SSTOC was established so that it wouldn't be violating the terms of measure R that was passed on the ballot or anything like that.
Yes, I've considered that. It's important to keep in mind that measure R is a general tax and the SSTOC was set up as a advisory and oversight body. And both of those will remain true with the proposed bylaw changes.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Then I will open public comment on item H3. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on item H3? Seeing none and we have no speaker cards, I will close public comment on item H3 and bring it back to the council for discussion. And what is before us today is to approve resolution number 4325, amending the bylaws of SSTOC. I'll just say that having served on SSTOC before and being familiar with the bylaws, I think this is a great, these are great amendments because they had clarity and emphasized the importance of evacuation, which I think is absolutely in sync with what the SSTOC is charged with doing.
I agree.
I would just second that, that especially the part about infrastructure improvements as they relate to emergency evacuation was consistent with everything we discussed in the mitigation measures. It's what we've discussed informally. So I think this is, I actually think it's something helpful and I'm glad to be doing it.
Any other comments? Then do we have a motion to approve resolution number 4325, amending the bylaws for the SSTOC?
Yeah, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second.
Made by Councilmember G and seconded by Councilmember Hoxsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. That takes us to item H4, which is the agreement with Ladris for evacuation wildfire modeling services and software.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this is another item where staff is presenting this to you as a way to satisfy the requirements of the settlement agreement with OC, while also being an appropriate next step for this organization to bolster our continual disaster prepared, planning and response efforts. This item is also responsive to one of the city's now adopted strategic initiatives to use emergency, emerging technologies to guide strategic investments in fuel mitigation and evacuation efforts. Staff proposes to augment these ongoing efforts we have with the use of this technology. In this case, staff is proposing the use of Ladris, a service and software company that uses artificial intelligence models to forecast climate-driven disasters, including wildfire, on infrastructure and population. This tool will enable us to do a variety of things and will be incredibly valuable for the city as we update both our emergency operations plan and continue our preparation efforts, working with the schools. It'll inform us about ways we can improve outcomes through modification. It also includes the ability to conduct variables in these scenarios so that we can help with our infrastructure planning. It will also help the public understand the importance of following direction during a crisis. We will be able to demonstrate to the public the difference between taking one or more vehicles when leaving your neighborhood and give them some sense of how quickly fire could spread to their neighborhoods. We would be purchasing as part of this agreement, most of the available functionality, if not all the available functionality that Ladris offers, including a public portal for use by the community. At its last meeting, the SSTOC also received a demonstration of Ladris and staff received positive feedback on the prospect of using this technology to assist the city in its disaster planning and response efforts. If this council approves as proposed, I will work across the city to establish a multidisciplinary team for its implementation. And we will work to begin that next month, bring the team through training and learning the Ladris system. And the goal would be to swiftly get to the point where we'll be able to run scenarios for the upcoming fire season. Ladris CEO Leo is on the Zoom. If you have any questions for Leo or if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager or for Ladris's CEO? No, okay. I don't think we have any questions. Thank you for being here.
I have one. As the city council, when can we expect sort of our first experience getting case studies or scenarios? Do you have just a timeframe in mind as to when we might start seeing some of the things it can do?
I would need to confer with Leo about that, but I think in terms of us getting started, it's the end of next month. We're going to get started in earnest. And I don't know, Leo, how long does it take to help get an agency moving and, and being able to start running some scenarios?
On your timeline and with what we've discussed, you should be able to start seeing very useful scenarios within a month. And once the team's fully trained, I think we have a 45, oh, 60-day implementation setup and we should have more in-depth results, you know, within 60 days after that. So not too long, all things considered. Yep.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I will open public comment for item H4. And I see no speaker cards. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on item H4? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. That takes us back to the council. That takes us back to the council for discussion. I just want to say in front of Leo that I, I'm so excited that the city is going to be able to use this and that our public is going to be able to engage with us around this. I just, I think this is going to be a really helpful tool.
I have to say, I was very impressed when I had the demonstration of the product and thought that the fact that it can get so close on, on the actual, looking at, you know, up to five feet, I think it was, as opposed to 30 feet.
Yeah, five meters.
Five meters, the vegetation, it was quite incredible what it could do. And I think really will be a wonderful tool for this to be to use when it's in place.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you for being here. And it is 10:45, so can we have a motion to extend the meeting till 11:00? Or I will move that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I, do, do we have a motion to approve a one-year agreement with Ladris for evacuation wildfire modeling services and software? Approve a budget change form number 003-26 and confirm the contract as exempt from competitive bidding.
I'm happy to move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember G, seconded by Councilmember Hoxsey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I'm going to ask our city attorney, would this be an appropriate time to go back to item H2 and see if there's?
So I think the question for the council is, would you like to pull H2 off the table for any further deliberation or direction to staff? Or now that you've considered H3 and H4 and you know what your colleagues have voted to do, are you happy with how we left it?
I don't feel the need to have any further deliberation. Does anybody else?
I'm satisfied as well.
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
All right, so then I don't think you need a motion to pull it off the table. You can just move to item H5.
Okay, thank you. And item H5 is filling vacancies on the Planning Commission, Arts and Public Places Committee and the Finance Advisory Committee. And city. Yes, sorry. Would you like to address this?
Yes, yes. Hang on one second, cut me off guard here. Okay. So at a recent city council meeting, we brought forward the issue of having vacancies on the Planning Commission and the Arts and Public Places Committee. And the council gave direction for the mayor to, well, first of all, for staff to find out if those candidates were still interested and they were. And also then the mayor spent time speaking with each of them. So tonight, mayor is recommending the appointment of Brenda Davis to the Planning Commission and Harmony Anderson to the Arts and Public Places Committee. And subsequently during the period between that and now, we have been doing a recruitment for the Finance Advisory Committee vacancy and we did receive one statement of interest, which also is included in this agenda report. So with that, I'll let you answer any questions that you might have.
Sure, and I'll just briefly say Brenda Davis, who's our recommendation for the Planning Commission, I engaged with and then also because she was interested in speaking with someone who had served on the Planning Commission, our vice mayor also spoke with her. And I think we were, both felt she would be a great addition. And the second with regard to the Arts and Public Places Committee, Harmony also did speak with a couple members of the Arts and Public Places Committee. And that seemed to be a good fit. And then my, just in the interest of time, my recommendation, having reviewed the application for the Finance Advisory Committee, would be that, that we consider that appointment tonight as well. If we can, can we do that?
Can.
Yeah, we can, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be.
In the interest of time, may I move that we appoint all three commissioners as recommended by Mayor Malkani?
I'll second that.
And before you do that, though, I just have to call public comment.
Sorry.
That's okay. So are there any questions? No. Are there any? Other, okay. Then let me open for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on item H5? We have no speaker cards and seen none. I will close public comment on item H5. And now, Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we appoint the three individuals as recommended.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoxsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that was also unanimous. And that takes us to item H6, which is our Board of Forestry update on draft regulations for Zone Zero.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. For the record, Nikki Cram, senior management analyst, I'm here to.
Just your recent request for matters initiated on Zone Zero. Governor Newsom issued an executive order directing the Board of Forestry to complete the adoption of new regulations by December 31, 2025. The Board of Forestry is currently updating the statewide rules for Zone Zero in consultation with the state fire marshal. Zone Zero refers to ember-resistant zones extending five feet from a structure, including decks and stairs. This is designed to reduce the risk of wildfire ignition from flying embers. Residents are being asked to establish and implement Zone Zero defensible space regulations. The Board of Forestry has had four meetings with few revisions and the most recent revision was issued in June. Of note, green grass will not be allowed within Zone Zero. City staff understands that this exclusion of grass is not supported by science and should be allowed. We also understand that potted plants will be permitted with specific placement restrictions. With certain rules and specific sizes, trees may be permitted. They are encouraging, the board is encouraging the use of drought-tolerant materials within Zone Zero. This would be such as gravel, rock, stone, pavers and possibly low-growing fire-resistant plants. The Board of Forestry is continuing to accept public comments on the proposed regulations and has another meeting scheduled for July 24. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Crammon?
My question is, are we planning, as the city of Aranda, to send comments to the public comments to the Board of Forestry or the?
I think that's part of what tonight's item is, is our thought is we should and we should comment on the grass question, but we wanted to get concurrence from the council before we speak on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any public comment on item H6? We have no speaker cards, seen no public comment. I would close public comment on item H6 and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Has MOFD already made comments of, or official comments?
I don't know if they've sent in any official comments. I think they've just talked to us about some of the regulations. But I think that the, the issue of sending a letter and talking about grass, lawn grass, not big grasses and scary grasses, but just irrigated lawn grass, that's something that MOFD is, believes is, is not posed a danger, right?
Yes, we know that Chief Isaacs is following this closely and he has brought that to our attention.
So I would be in favor of sending the letter. My only question on that was, and I don't know that we can get clarification in time for the deadline and if we can't, so be it, but if MOFD leadership, you know, whoever's in charge, well, Chief Isaacs were to tell us that succulents also are, don't pose a fire danger, then maybe we could address that in the letter. But unless we have a, an equivocal position from MOFD on that in support, I wouldn't include it. That was my only thought. Because that confused me. Why are low-growing succulents not allowed? Because they're more drought tolerant than grass.
Why would you do the?
Why, why couldn't we make that position without knowing what the fire chief thinks? I mean, it makes sense if it's a plant is full of water, it's not exactly.
It does, but I, I just, I really do defer to them on fire science, you know, saying something. I'm not, I don't, we're not fire scientists.
Yeah, but it's sort of an advocacy thing. My thought is, if the house, I mean, there's no talk about what the house is made out of. And if the house is made out of stone, brick, there should be an exception. I mean, I can't believe that there's a concern if your house is made out of brick. And I've, I've never heard anyone talk about that or seen that here.
I've heard this comment raised before, which is if a house is made of concrete or, you know, why, why do we really need?
Yeah, so, but it's not, it needs to be said, written. Do you think?
I think there's a lot of homes where there's maybe a base of brick or a base of concrete, stone, that I think the fired, I mean, my recollection of conversations with Chief Isaacs about this previously is, yes, but then you're, if the entire house is made of it, that might be one thing. But oftentimes the materials are only to a certain point. And so then.
Right.
Embers get in under the roof.
I'm assuming the whole thing is stone or brick, rock.
Okay, but what about the roof and the?
We don't really have any.
Do we have any?
Yes, we do.
I have friends, yeah. Your friends in Aranda, okay. I guess I would say at this point, because we don't have the ability to necessarily confirm certain things, I would, I would be comfortable sending the letter about the lawn, lawn.
There might be more. I don't know how many more times there's going to be public comment. There's been three occasions so far. There might be more opportunities that we could start with trying to save people's green grass in this five-foot area.
I would like to defer to staff a little more broadly because the grass point is obvious. But as we, the very first time this stuff came up, we realized that the MOFD's mandate is fire suppression and to some extent prevention. Ours is more broadly community interest. And so when we think about the, you know, you talk to a regular resident, the first thing they say is, well, a shingle house is the same as a brick house? That's stupid. So some of these, these more common feedbacks, I don't think there's time for us to build consensus, but I would like to defer to staff to add to the letter with things that they and the SSTOC leadership feel are appropriate. I'm happy to give my proxy to speak for us as the city.
I would agree to that.
I, I think.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I do think, I do think we, we very much care about being in sync with MOFD, but we do have broader issues than they do overall. And I think we're going to get into broader issues.
And these common things like someone's camellias by their front door or cacti by the, you know, different succulents as decorative.
Or stone houses.
Or stone. I, I mean, I just think they're all questions that this draft regulation doesn't even begin to reasonably address. And to the extent that our city would like to, you know, provide some comment, I think, I think we should start providing those comments so they understand that there are questions.
Okay.
Okay, so we have direction.
Great, thank you. Okay, and that concludes item H6. Item I is council members' reports. We've got two minutes left. Does anyone, council members have reports? Okay, hearing none. City managers' report, item J.
I'll pass, thank you.
Any matters initiated tonight? Hearing none. The next, we will adjourn and the next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 19, 2025. Yay, we're done.
Great, thank you. Oh, that was a late one.
Oh, my gosh. No, Tuesday, August 19.
This is normal.
Did I just say, okay, Tuesday, August 19? I may have missed one.
Have a great trip.
Thank you, I'll show you pictures when we get back. Super excited about it. No, it's good. This is our job. This is our job. You shouldn't feel bad.
I do though, because it was.